Okay, we'll officially call the August 13th work session to order at 7:04 PM. And we'll let the ministry reflect that we have all board members present as well as a number of staff, and it's always great to see a number of residents, friends, and others that come to these meetings as well. And I certainly would be remiss if I didn't recognize the former supervisor Chan Felbrik. Chan, always a pleasure to see you. Before us, we have our July 23rd, 2014 minutes, and would entertain a motion of approval of those minutes.
How move?
Remove second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Questions, corrections, comments, or otherwise? Okay, seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as written. Lisa, thank you as always. We have the July monthly reports in front of us. I won't put anyone on the spot, but we'll just indicate that there are a couple that are still outstanding, and would expect we probably would receive those by the end of the week for those. So, thank you very much for those that did get them in, and those that will be getting them in by the end of the week. We have no public hearings tonight. We do have a couple of guests tonight. We're going to start with Steve Small and the Northeast Joint Fire District. Progress on the north station project, so, welcome.
Good evening. Right here, sir.
Right there, sir.
Okay, great. Thanks for having us tonight. Again, I'm Steve Small, and the Executive Director of the Northeast Joint Fire District, commonly known as the Webster Volunteer Fire Department. With me tonight is Commissioner Bill Southwell.
Hi, Bill.
I will keep this to less than three hours, I promise. It was about two years ago that we came-
You'll be here by yourself.
Yeah. It was about two years ago we came before the board regarding the north station project. At that time, it was, the focus of the building was a combination station that was going to house both the Webster Volunteer Fire Department and the Union Hill Ambulance. That proposition was solidly rejected in July of 2012. The board has taken a close look at the overall building program, listened closely to the public comments and the elected officials, and a lot of things have changed within the district since 2012, but what hasn't changed is the strong identified need for a north station. So, the building committee, which has had representatives from the fire service and interested members of the public on the committee, have been working very hard over the last year to put together a new plan, a much smaller plan than the original plan, and although the project is in the town of Webster, the Webster Volunteer Fire Department serves about a 30-year town north of Atlantic Avenue, so volunteers will be responding to this station, manning equipment, and then heading, you know, anywhere within the district, including northeast Penfield. So, I put together an information packet for you. I'm going to take just a couple minutes, if it's okay, just to kind of breeze through it and answer any questions that you may have. The first couple of pages is a-
And Steve, I would just ask that, you know, now that we have this, any concern if we were to add this to our website?
No, that'd be great. We would actually encourage that. Any other materials I can provide to the town to put up on the website would be great. We're rolling out a public information campaign as we speak, and the renderings are coming in by the hour of, you know, the changes to the building and whatnot.
Okay.
Ron Nesbit has been nice enough to allow us to put an article in the Town Times, which is going to go out to every Webster household before the bond proposition, so that's actually going to help us out with not having to spend $10,000 on a door-to-door mailing, if you will. But the first couple of pages is kind of an open summary letter from Chairman Steve Wright. I'm not going to go through that, but if you wanted to read that, it kind of is a summary of the, a little bit of the history of the project, the need, and where we're going forward with it. Page four, just to review when the district was formed back in 2005, they hired the Center for Governmental Research to look at the facility, personnel, and equipment needs over the next 20 years, and part of that study looked at firehouse locations, and using population projections, housing projections, and the calls for service within the district, they did identify that we, you know, we already knew it, but they reaffirmed that we needed a north station north of the village of Webster. And just as a note, nearly 40% of our active volunteer firefighters live north of the village of Webster, and I'm sure you experienced it in the four corners of Penfield, but they try to get through the village of Webster. If you're coming from the north end, they get to the South Avenue Firehouse. At certain times today, it can nearly be impossible to get there and be effective to man the apparatus. So, the need is definitely there. It was reaffirmed by the CGR back in 2007 as far as the location of the firehouse when the land became available, and they did re-investigate that and did state that the location that the district had picked was a good location for the station. There's an illustration of that on the next page with all those fancy colored dots. The big red one is the area of concern. That's where 40% of our volunteer firemen live, and there's no station up there, so we're having a hard time getting the volunteers to the equipment and then getting it back out to the calls. The blue dots on the right side of the page represent the two firehouses manned by our contract partners, the Union Hill Fire Department. The two green circles are our current stations that the district operates that are manned by our primary provider, the Webster Volunteer Fire Department, and we have another station that's in the town of Penfield at the corner of Plank Road and State Road. It's our mutual aid partners, West Webster Fire Department, that helps us cover that part of the district. As far as the two building plans, 2012 to 2014, just some of the amenities that were removed from the facility. The ambulance service was completely removed. Since 2012, the Union Hill Ambulance has renovated their station at the corner of County Line and Ridge. They've actually separated their ambulance company from their fire company and their third-party billing, so they've moved in a different direction. Still going to service the town of Webster, but the district is not going to be including them in any building plans. It's been a refocused program of just fire protection, which is the core mission of the fire district anyways. We've removed exam room, conference rooms, there's no locker rooms or display case, the extended operations area's been removed, there's no file storage, dedicated decon area, there's no administrative offices, removed the apparatus space by 35%, reduced the sleeping quarters by 60%, and the firefighter support area was also reduced. So, basically, the plan is about half the size of the original plan, which if you flip the page on page seven, kind of gives you a size-to-size comparison of the 2012 plan to the 2014 plan. If you flip over to page eight, there's a kind of a blow-up of the actual floor plan. We've been calling this the no-fluff station. There's really nothing in this that we don't absolutely need to have, you know, a small firehouse, to have a couple of fire trucks, and have a place for the firemen to spend their downtime, and again, we always want to encourage our volunteers to be in the station whenever we can get them. It's free labor. We're 100% volunteer with no paid staff, so, you know, if we can provide a couple of lounge chairs and a TV for them to hang out when they have some spare time, it's always, it's good to do that. It's two drive-through apparatus spaces, which is almost about half of the square footage of the entire facility. The radio room is a dual-purpose space that octagon-shaped there serves both as the watch desk and the radio room. We also combine the kitchen, the eating area, and the ready room into one space, so it's kind of multi-purpose, and it's kind of a no-frills type of deal. There's an eating counter, a table to eat on, and a few, there's five chairs there to watch television or whatever the guys or girls are doing in there. There's a men's and women's bathroom, there's an IT communications, which is basically the server room with a phone system, security system, and computers to be held, mechanicals' room, we have laundry area, because we still have to do the bedding, you know, if a guy sleeps overnight or the firefighter sleeps overnight, they need to wash the bedding the next day, and also the rig toweling and stuff like that. And then the SCVA, which is self-contained breathing apparatus, that's just where we wash the Scott masks and we service the regulators and doing repairs that we need to do with the equipment there, and a couple of janitor closets. The only reason there's a front vestibule in the floor plan is its energy code. We had to have that in there. If we didn't have to have it, we wouldn't, but... Any questions on the floor plan? It's really a bare-bones type of situation there. We have a headquarters building on South Avenue, and we have the substation over at Salt and Plank that has the conference rooms and the meeting rooms and things like that, so we didn't want to duplicate anything that we didn't absolutely need in the firehouse in order to meet the core mission of the district.
And in here, is it safe to assume that there are two pieces of equipment that you have, and then the other one that's not quite as highlighted detailed, that's a potential future rig?
Yeah, Tony, it's an illustration, basically, what is placed up there is going to be dictated by the chief, but the broader question is, we don't need to buy any more equipment. We already have all the fire apparatus that we need. As part of our long-range plan, it always has been known that we need a north station, so we already have the pumper and whatnot to put up there. The ladder truck is shown in there to just illustrate that we can put it up there if we have to. We just bought a new ladder truck. We paid cash for it, and we didn't have to bond anything, and it's a quint, so it has water on it, so it's multi-purpose. With Xerox being right next door, and not knowing what their fire brigade's going to be doing in the future, we might have to move that quint up there to be closer to Xerox, which is, you know, is a large industrial complex with a lot of calls for service up there. So, at this point, we plan on having one engine company and a small rescue up there, but again, that can change, you know, depending on the needs and personnel, where they live, and who's responding to what firehouse. The next page is a 3D rendition of what the building will look like. It's a two-section building with a flat roof on both sides. That was actually done to keep the cost down and help us with not having to have a dry fire protection system. It's a full-wet system in the building, and there is a front porch area, which will have a small picnic table for the firefighters to kind of be out on the west side of the building. The 3D rendition, you're looking from Phillips Road, you're looking east there at that color, so... We did take advantage of some valued engineering savings regarding the exterior of the structure through the phases of the design. The board decided to go with a split-face block and a ground-face block rather than all brick. It was a savings of about $75,000. They also got rid of the precast around the top of the building and just went with regular split-face block on it. Still want it to look nice in the neighborhood, blend in with the residential character, but we want to save money wherever we can. As far as the management team that's in place right now, the architect and the structural engineer, civil engineer, those are all people that have been with us since the beginning. We went out and interviewed numerous MEP engineers and construction companies, and we ended up going with the lowest-cost individuals, but we think we have an excellent team put together in the Chase Construction and EC4B for the MEP. Worked extensively over the last three months to estimate this project. Even involved municipal projects or any type of building project, you know that that estimate is crucial. We're very, very confident that the numbers that we have are accurate numbers, and it's enough to, you know, if the bond is approved in September, that we'll be able to build this and not have to go back to the public, and it's not artificially inflated in any way. The project costs, I broke it down into three basic sections. The main section, labor, materials, subcontracting, equipment. The site work, which is quite extensive up on the site on Phillips Road, it's located at 600 Phillips, just north of Xerox. The way postage would like it designed, the safest way to keep it from flooding, is to raise the entire site up under the building footprint so that we can remove most of the stormwater via shed rather than mechanically through culverts and whatnot. So, it was nearly $345,000 alone just on the site work, including the paving. There's a lot of asphalt out there as well. All the rest of these issues, the permits, contingencies, and escalation between the time the bond is approved and we go out to bid is $2.5 million. The next section is your architectural design, structural, civil, and mechanical engineering. The entire construction management and the stormwater pollution prevention plan and testing fees is $203,000. We're pretty proud of that number. We worked really hard with these companies to get that number down, took a lot of the contingencies out, because we don't think we're going to have a lot of change orders on this project. It's pretty well, not much to change on, you know, unless we're going to be adding stuff, which we don't anticipate in doing. The next section, the financial expense, including the need to go out for a new credit rating. We currently have an AA-minus credit rating, which when it was established in 2008 by Standard and Poor's was the best-rated fire district in the state of New York. It was reaffirmed in 2011, still at an AA-minus, we're pretty proud of that. We don't think that it's going to be anything less than that, but we need to, in order for, to get the new bond, we need to go out for a new credit rating. There's an expense to that. Legal, and then our FFNE, which is basically furnishing the building, to take it from the shell to make it a firehouse. Again, we took a baseball bat to that budget line, and we came up with 160, which is on the low end of what I think we need, but I know we can get the job done for that. The total project cost is $2.886, $192. The resolution is going to be for a $2.496, $192 bond over 30 years. It is a Class A structure, which allows us for the 30-year bond and to use 390 from the capital reserves that the district already has. The tax rate implications, and we'll tout the district here a little bit. Due to the disciplined financial planning and the restructuring of the district finances, including partial elimination of current debt that we have on the Roseland Station, we have it budgeted 2015 and beyond that the district will be able to build and operate the station with zero net tax increase to the residents. So, the current tax rate, which in the town of Penfield for fire protection is 81 cents a thousand, will remain the same. Our future budgets, within that, that budget level includes critical apparatus replacement schedule. We can't let our fire trucks get too old and become unsafe and out of standards, so the district is extremely committed to keeping the tax rate stable, and this rate and this entire financial plan, which goes out 25 years, keeps the tax rate stable and be able to do that within the 2% tax cap that we're all trying to keep our future budgets within, as long as we can stay 100% volunteer.
Or 1.56 is what it is today.
The not-quite 2%.
Right, that's correct.
So, as far as the timeline, right now, we're in the middle of the public information campaign. We're meeting with all our elected officials, the town of Webster, yourselves, the village. We're meeting with Assemblyman Johns and legislator Gwamina next week. We're doing large ads in our official newspaper, the Webster Herald. We're fortunate enough that Supervisor Nesbit's helping us out with the Town Times article. It'll be on our website, the LED signboard outside of the firehouse, and we're doing dedicated news stories with the Webster Herald and Webster Post. We're trying to get the information out there as best we can. The public information meeting is Tuesday, September 9th at 7:00 PM. As of 1 o'clock today, I did secure the Schlegel Road Elementary School on Schlegel Road for that, so, the principal was on vacation, I couldn't nail that down, so... When I had these printed yesterday, it was a DVD, but it'll be up at Schlegel Road. The public bond vote is scheduled for September 30th up at 550 Webster Road, 3:00 to 9:00 PM, and all registered voters of the district are encouraged to vote. And then the rest of that is post-bond vote if it's approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that you may have over the project.
So, in a perfect world, commence construction in June and occupy by December?
That is correct, up next year.
Up next, '15, I should have said that. Okay. Good. Board, any questions, comments?
The first proposal, what was the total dollar amount of that?
$5.4 million, and it was a $4.9 million bond proposition. So, it's right around half the cost, half the size.
Okay. So, you know, we can take a look at this certainly if we have any questions, comments, directly to you?
Please.
Okay, we can get those to you. We can put this up on our website. I'm not going to commit, that'll be there tomorrow, but our team downstairs, probably within a couple of business days, should be able to take this and, you know, have it up, so, you know, we'll organize it in a way that if you log on to our website, because, you know, it is timely, we'll want to make sure that folks that go onto the website have an interest in seeing that, can get to that, can navigate that pretty easily, because obviously it is time-sensitive. So, we can make sure that we do that and make that available. We appreciate that.
Is there an easy way for residents to find out whether they're within the district or not? Because we may get questions from people saying, "I don't even know which district I'm in."
Yeah, generally speaking, north of Atlantic Avenue, and it'd be Jackson Road East.
So, there's no place like, you know, like, where elections, you can look up where you're-
Well, they probably could, but you said easy, so I'm not sure if-
On their tax bill, which they often-
Yeah, if they can find that, it would say either Penfield Fire or NEJ Fire for their tax bill, but if somebody's looking at geographics, it's generally north of Atlantic and east of Jackson Road. They can always call me.
I was just saying, perhaps maybe that might be included in somehow, you know, if you question whether you're in the district or you want to make sure you are, to have a place for people to call and check that.
Yeah, have them call me. I'd be happy to answer all the phone calls and field those questions.
9526?
Yep.
872-9526, the best number, Steve.
I'm very good getting back to people, so, happy to field all the questions.
Let's see Penfield residents, I'm kicking, just because you tend to think of Webster and-
It's a great question for Webster, too, because everybody west of the hard road is in the West Webster Fire District, so we try to... In that letter from Steve Wright, you'll see kind of that he outlines where the district is, because, you know, a lot of people, honestly, they don't know. They call 911, and they hope a fire truck shows up.
I mean, that's-
And that's our fault, is to make sure we get somebody there quickly.
I was going to say, it really doesn't make any difference, you know, when you have the emergency, what it says on the side, as long as it's big, red, shiny, and it's got lights on it.
And it gets there pretty quickly.
Yeah, and gets there in a timely fashion. Mark Valentine, if I go on to our website, you know, we've got a number of maps that are available. It seems to me that there might be one on fire districts.
I could send you a map of our district.
Yeah, so if it's not, we could create one and get that up, so at least it's on there.
I think that'd be very helpful.
I've got a very good map of the district.
Back to your point, we might be able to just, you know, do some easy link to that.
To make that attachment.
Yeah, that page five, without, I have that map without all the circles and everything, which will kind of, you know, it's all, this is Atlantic Avenue right at the bottom of the district, so people can look at that. If they live on Qualtria Road, you know, they know they're not in the Northeast Joint Fire, so I'd be happy to send that to you.
If you can send that.
Yeah. And the whole thing is available electronically, if that's helpful for your team to put it up on a-
That would be the next, that would have been the next logical question that the group downstairs would have asked for, so if you could push it either to Mark or myself, Steve, either way, we'll make sure that we get it to our team to get it up and available for residents.
And I think we can include in our, you know, in our announcements and what we put on our PC TV as well, as far as community announcements, the information meeting.
Absolutely.
And for the people that can't make the information meeting, the PowerPoint that we're doing that night, I then turned it into a narrated slideshow, and it's available right on our website through BrainShark, so you can watch the entire thing if you can't make the meeting, which was helpful last time. And I get to track it, several hundred people actually watched the whole thing, which-
Good.
Again, you know, we're very proud of the project, we know it's needed, and we want to get as much information to the public out there as we can.
Okay, excellent.
We appreciate you having us.
All right. So, board, if, once we've taken a look at this, digested this, if you've got any questions, you know, we can, you know, get ahold of Steve directly, or we can run them through my office, whatever is easiest to make sure that they get forwarded over to the district.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Colin, thanks.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Steve, we appreciate you.
Yeah, Bill did a great job, yeah, he always does.
Right as I do.
Like I always was. Somebody else still.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Our next guest is Gary Smith, a discussion to consider RV park at 1234 North Hope Road and 1271 Plank Road. Mr. Smith, welcome. Jim, I'm not sure if you would like to make a couple of intro comments and remarks.
Well, shortly after, we had had a discussion regarding a proposal for the 208 lots on Jackson and Plank Road, Gary came to Tony and I and asked if he could come to the board and talk a little bit about a proposal that he had, which, as you remember, Gary had indicated he was not interested in the short-term development of the property, and was looking for something to do in the interim before the property were to be developed. So, he asked Tony and I if we could bring him before you to discuss another alternative, and I will let you get into the alternative. I'll leave it at that.
Gary Smith, what I was proposing is to come up with like an RV recreational resort in this area. There's nothing in the area as it is right now. We have Webster Park, which doesn't have, only I think 38 sites for camping and RVs, and they're outdated. A lot of the newer rigs can't park in that area, and gets flooded every time it rains, so I'm thinking, you know, if I come up with another site in this area. I'm talking to other people, president of Coney New York State Campers, you know, he's gaining a lot of information, you know, I talk to him a lot, and he definitely thinks the area would support a park. But before I get into all that, what I was going to present or show you is I wanted to get the feedback from all the neighbors to kind of get an idea of what their thoughts were, or what the land could be used for down the road. So, what I ended up doing is going around the block, talking to all the neighbors that would be affected from what we're doing here. I went down North Hope Road, Plank Road, 250, and part of Allen Road as well in Jackson. Talked to all the neighbors, went to the homeowners that I couldn't get them, I went there at least three times. I got a big percentage of those, a few that just weren't home. What I did is I traded the board and showed them a couple options. This is what has been presented to the town as a proposal for the land. We currently own a little over 80 acres. 1250 North Hope Road, 1271 Plank Road, and we're proposing a current old parcel of 1271 Plank Road, come up with something that would create income, preserve the land, keep the green space as it is, keep it, it's a very secluded area. You can't see the road from any direction, there's one spot, maybe a couple hundred yards by the house that you can see with a saw, you know, private back in here. So, I wanted something that could create, possibly an annual income that could be passed on to the kids down the road and preserve, you know, all the green space and the land the way it is. So, I presented this to the neighbors, showed them what, you know, has been presented to the town, showed them a couple developments with the homes that are in the area, and I kind of showed them what an alternative, which I was proposing for the same parcel of land, would be to do recreational resort. I showed them the poor parcel of land that we were talking about, an overview of the land, just a quick sketch. I had an engineer draft up for me and kind of put a couple things in here. We'd have an entryway next to the existing pool barn on the current old property. So, you'd have an entryway, and you'd have, you know, some of your amenities for the kids, you know, you'd have a pool, volleyball court, playground, things like that for amenities for the kids. And then have a park set way back in off the road so that it can't be seen. Many other sections, we got some wetlands along 250, which provides solid screening between our property and in the backside of this, there's a hedgerow where you can't see through once it's leaked up. I did plant already between Tom's house, which is the horse farm, and this section of property, I put in over 100 trees here and 300 pine trees to create a buffer, so whatever ends up happening to this land, whether it becomes development or RV park, that it would provide privacy from his place so that you just have to look into this area. Because you can see possibly this first row, we really don't see this first row of RVs from his house, and then the land drops off, so where you could think back here would be hidden. So, I just created an area where you'd have, you know, multiple sites, I think a park at, you know, you have some amenities with kids, some water features, some ponds, we put in a couple ponds. I promote a lot of, I have, you know, I ever planted over 100 trees, I have another 500 to 1,000 that I could put out here, just to put a lot of cover. We already have a pretty well-covered area, as you can see, this dark area here, there's already existing trees and rosh which we would preserve, and just put some sites within that area. I would like to try to create some seasonal sites where people could come and stay for a season, for visiting family or friends in the area, whether it be a small cottage homes or little, you know, wild cabin type things, places that they could actually stay for a season if they wanted to come up for the summer, you know, people visiting, a lot of retirees down in Florida, down south, coming back to this area, a lot of family, a lot of family in the area that could come and visit, visit an area, a site nearby that they can stay. Just again, really no other sites, right, with a sort of, like, an hour of this location that they could stay. There's a lot in the Rochester area, you know, people coming to visit. People come to parks, they don't come to the same place, well, they may visit every year, but they don't come and stay in one site, they're constantly bouncing around different parks, you know, so there's a similar place in the Rochester area that they come and visit, and the site's being toured, do a lot of the things in the Rochester area, have a place close by, you know, because it's a lot of visiting family as well. So, that's the concept, trying to create some green space, and that shows the homeowners both concepts, what we're promoting. I had a signature pad here to let them decide on which one they would rather see the land used for down the road, and I did have, out of the total number of houses, I went to, I had 68, preferred to see the land used as an RV park, four that weren't sure, two that didn't want it either, and then two that were supporting the subdivision. So, I do have copies of all their signatures with the addresses of all the places that I stopped to. That was kind of the concept of what we're trying to create, and I wanted to bring it to the board before I spend too much money in engineering and everything else, just to kind of get feedback for what their thought was, what we could do down the road.
Gary, you mentioned 80 acres.
We have 80 acres. This parcel here is 38, I believe it is.
How big?
How, how deep? What would you envision as maximum capacity as far as number of RVs and or?
The engineer originally had a hundred, a hundred sites that they could park on, on this parcel of land. If I'm able to, again, I'd like to put in some seasonal cottage-type homes, small places where they could come and stay for a long-term. Years, they, they come and go, you know, they may stay for a week, a month, and they're gone, but if somebody had a place to stay. When you talk to campground owners and stuff, their, their seasonals are, they're hot sites, you know, they come to the area. And they want a place to stay, and if they can stay for six months, you know, they don't have to rent an apartment for a year, or, or, you know, they want to visit family or friends. You give them a place to stay for the summer, and then they can leave. A lot of people own, own the seasonal homes, you know, because they come back to visit family every year. And they live in Florida or down south in the winter months, which is something on a, on a smaller scale, you know.
What's the RV season?
RVs usually are from, start early May till usually October, November range, when they start closing down.
So it would be completely closed from November to May, for instance, in November, April?
So yeah, it's April, maybe, or mid-April, somewhere in there.
Can you repeat the, the streets you canvassed again? You ticked off.
I went around the whole block. I went down North Hope Road, both sides of North Hope Road, Jackson Road, Plank Road, around here. There wasn't a whole lot of houses. The only, really the only house that there is is the horse farm right next to it. So I went on both sides, and I went past Jackson and passed two fifty, both directions, to pick up more homes. Two fifty, there's only a couple on two fifty, and then down Allen Road, probably halfway down Allen Road.
Is, is the, the entrance on Plank?
Plank Road, it would be on the side of the existing pole barn, existing home, so we'd have separate entrance, and we're going to create a berm in the front. And there are a lot of material here from, from current, just known the property, that we would create a berm, again, just to kind of privatize this one yard right by. You really can't see what's going on in there.
And I'm somewhat familiar with RV parks, but what kind of utilities or underground infrastructure would be needed on site?
You need water, sewer, electric, cable. You know, we want to try and make it more of a modern park.
Okay.
Size-wise, because a lot of your RVs and the older parks, they're, they can't fit, they can't maneuver. People like to have the drive-through sites where they can just drive in and then drive right out, not have a maneuver, not try and get back into sites back in. So it would be, you know, again, a more modernized park.
But security?
With an engineer, pardon?
Security.
Security.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know about RV parks, but I would think you'd want somebody to make sure it's all safe around it, the.
Well, yeah.
Like, can't, can't lots have security vehicles and?
Yeah, we would be, well, we live right behind there. We would be working the site, whether we, whether it's on, takes over the house or whatnot, or we, whoever, you know, working could work out of the house, or again, we live right behind there, so during working hours, we'd be there during the night. I mean, I don't think any parks have security that drive around in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
Not RV parks, I don't know, maybe in campgrounds or something.
If, if I was in an RV and I had a, a problem, and I wanted to talk to somebody, that, who would you contact? Would you contact you, or would there be somebody on the premises, or?
Those are things that I'd have to look into. I mean, this is the early phase, I don't, I'd have to research stuff.
Jim, can I put you on a spot? What is this currently zoned as?
It's currently zoned RE two, and I have been looking, since Gary had met with us, I've been looking around the state for RV zoning districts. I've, I've been Googling RV parks. There are many. It's not going to sell on Sunday, I was telling, I saw one on Sunday on the way to Sodis, there's one, I think, near Polkville. But I haven't found any RV zoning district yet.
Because my, my understanding is we would have to create the permits of use in a zoning fashion.
Right, right.
And go through the regular zoning protocol.
Exactly. I'm, I'm looking for one right now, as a matter of fact. There's a proposed RV district, or proposed RV park that's being looked at in Farmington. I'm looking to see if Farmington has some district to accommodate that or not. I'm not sure they do yet. All the ones that I've looked at have mobile home park districts. And I think that we probably not want a mobile home park district. If you were to entertain this, you'd want to have a separate zoning district.
Oh, yeah, because this is seasonal, that's permanent.
Right, right.
Any of the research that you've done, Gary, talk about units left in place over the winter.
Pardon?
Units, units left in place over the winter, or come that September, October timeframe, is everything pulled out, obviously, minus?
Well, a lot of the ones that, a lot of people are traveling, would be gone. Again, if you have the seasonal sites, the permit sites, they would be.
Right, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't envision a trailer being set up and then just left there for years at a time?
Not a trailer, no, anything.
That you wouldn't have storage, you wouldn't have off-season storage.
If possible, I mean, maybe we would have an area for off-season storage, if possible, if they would allow that somewhere. I don't know what you would have for storage.
I'm not saying that that's something that's preferable. I'm just asking you if that's something that you envisioned as far as your business plan.
Well, it may, it may go hand in hand with, with my question as well. So if I have a trailer, and I, and I tow my trailer there, you know, towards the end of the season, am I able to leave it there, store it there, or leave it there until next season?
And I may or may not. They'll allow that or not, because it's hidden, you can't see it, everything's closed down, everything's shut down, the water is turned off, you know, they're winterized, the systems are winterized. So, we wouldn't be living in it, it's a, it's an RV.
Yeah, I would, but I was, I was thinking more along the lines that you see some of these locations, which may not be like this, but see some of these locations where a trailer is towed in, and then it's set up, and, and that's kind of their, their, their campground, or that's their, their plot, if you will. And they come back year after year after year type of thing, and utilize that, utilize that space.
Just if there was a section, if there was a lot of it in town, I mean, if we could do that, it would.
Well, it sounds as if that's not something that you're asking, that you'd be asking for, that once, once the season shuts down.
So new, I'm just trying to get a feel of what, what my, things I have to research. I mean, that would be one of the things that I got to look into, to see if, if people would leave it there, you know, maybe. Again, you can't see it from anywhere. You know, the only place you could see is, like I mentioned, in one small section. So maybe if they were left, they were in the back, the lower level or something, you're not going to see it from the road unless you're driving to the park. There's nothing visible, even in the wintertime, you can't see it from two fifty with all the, the tree covering, the leaves drop. Can't see in there. Keep enough cover.
And, and what, what were you, what were you thinking by way of the, you know, seasonal units? Do you have any rough, rough number that you were thinking about?
I don't have a number. I'm just thinking small type cottages or a lot of homes, something that fit, you know, the, the setting. Or maybe a trailer, I mean, because I think it's considered a trailer park, but it was a small, really have some pictures here, but just some small type cottages that you can build relatively easy, you can pick these up on. Pre-patched, little cabin type, sort of little cottage type homes, you know, a place where a, a retired couple could come up and stay for the summer, you know, visit a family or. The area. You know, it could overflow into, you know, into the backside. We have a heavy, heavy hedgerow here, which you can't see from, from our parcel into this parcel of land, you know, you can do on the backside of the land, you know, the seasonals. Because again, you can't see it from, from anywhere. And people like the privacy, and that's the thing, when you, when you're out in the land, I did take some pictures of the land, I don't want to pass them around, but you literally can't see the road. It's up to one spot right here, in any of the locations, pretty heavily covered. Very private, so you, you won't think in a town of Penfield when you, when you're staying there, where you're secluded area.
Jim, the proposed RV you just alluded to in Farmington, do you know what stage that's at?
I don't believe it's been constructed yet.
But it's been approved?
They're in negotiations right now with the applicant. Jim, there's one in Massing that's being built right now. An RV park? Yeah. Checking on that one, too, thank you.
So the, when you mentioned earlier, there's nothing within forty-five minutes to an hour, what are you mentioning?
One being built right now in, on the canal.
Okay.
I don't know how many sites that is. Again, it would be an upscale, modern site, a lot of amenities, a place where, again, people can come. They don't go to the same place to stay all summer. A lot of them just like to bounce around, visit different areas, and if it looks trashy, they're not going to come back. So you gotta make it look, you know, high and presentable, have activities and things to do, make it a nice, relaxing site.
Do you have a thought of, what of a cost to stay there for the season?
Most, not for seasons, no. Most sites usually range from mid-thirties to fifty dollars, depending on the amenities that you have for them. Some of them have Wi-Fi, cable, some don't. It all depends on what you provide for them, for the site.
What, would you be promoting it month by month, or?
There would be different fees. You'd have your, your overnight, weekly, monthly, and then if they decide, like you said, to park there. One for the season, you'd have a seasonal site, they all have breakdowns that way. Or is that a little hours? No, I got a, you know, getting to a, a plan, figuring out what the costs is, a lot, a lot of research still. I just wanted to kind of give a feedback to the town if they'd allow me to pursue something like this, or if they're going to shoot it down right off of that. It does promote the green, promotes all, you know, keeps all the trees where they are, you know, again, if you bring in another five hundred to a thousand trees, just to kind of create that green space. Like it's, that park, like you said, would be to want to come back.
Would, would you consider this up until there's a proposal for development that maybe is more advantageous in the long term? Or is this sort of permanent?
The reason I pursued this, when I bought the land, obviously, I'm keeping all options open right now. The development is one option, but if this gets shot down, and, I mean, eventually all the farmland becomes housing tract. So whether, whether that development goes, or if that gets shot down, I mean, you could still put forty houses out there, you know. And that's what I told the homeowners, you know, whether that goes or not, if there's forty houses or a hundred houses, it's still going to be a housing tract. So they knew that, you know, eventually, yeah, it would just be sold to a developer.
How long have you owned the property?
Well, I grew up on the land that we owned, the farm on North Hope Road, and this we purchased last year, current farm. So I'm just trying to create an income, again, something that's, yeah, the, the money isn't, is impressive, you know, if we turn around and sell as a housing tract, yeah, we make a ton of money. You know, and then be done with it at the end. It's a one-time deal. You got a hundred neighbors in the backyard. The land's gone, you know, you can never use it for anything else. This, this fails five, ten years from now, I mean, you could still develop the land if something happens to it, if we haven't changed it. Add some more trees, and whether you use sewer or septic, it could run either way. Check with the county health department, and they would allow sewer systems on something like this. Again, it has to perk and all that, so I just don't want to spend all that money yet, until I know, I can go ahead with this. And a couple of outhouses, cellar rooms.
If, if the sewer weren't to go down, how would you handle, septic, septic would be the option, I would say.
The septic would be the option, yep, septic would actually be cheaper, eh, than doing the sewer, because the cost would have to help bring the sewer in and bring the sewer lines all the way over here. The health department would allow me to do septic. Again, the analysis would be determine size, the number of sites, to determine how many, how many this sewer system has to be. Per test to determine where it would be located. It's pretty dry ground, just a couple of white spots in the lower corner where there's some, some wetlands. There's a lot of area that's in per time.
Gary, I apologize if you already answered this question, but what, what kind of rental rates does each site?
Again, they vary. A lot of them, your lower-end ones are thirty, your higher-end ones are fifty, fifty-five.
A night?
Per night, you know, per your amenities. If you provide Wi-Fi and cable and things like that, which we would, and we want to have all the amenities for them, again, making a more modern park. Drive-throughs, you, you get more for your drive-through sites than, than the back. And there's so many things that, variations of what you can do with the income on these. Some sites will look for, you could create a little pad, you could put a little concrete pad out, you know, that's affects the price. So if they wanted to have a little, you know, if a poor site, if they have an umbrella off the side, a little canopy, they have a place to sit, if they want to sit around. So we just some concrete, some without, you know, try and get a variety of sites. But the, the drive-throughs are really popular, people like that.
So I heard, Gary, that eighty acres, but looking to utilize thirty-eight of the acres?
Right now, this is all designed on the current's parcel of land, the old land, which is, I believe, like thirty-six, thirty-eight, something like that.
What's your entire?
The parcels tied together, they're backed onto each other.
I was going to say, your total holdings is about eighty?
It's a little over eighty acres, yeah. From North Hope, we own from North Hope all the way through Plank. Except for Amish's land, which got donated to the town, so that will always be private, and don't worry about that being developed. There's a parcel of land, which is wetland, which is right next to two fifty again, which can't be developed.
Just, just the north, to the north of Amish?
Yes. It's all secluded from two fifty, from our site, it's all set back. And it's, I got more trees coming in, just to create a buffer. I already planted a bunch here, so whatever happens, you know, their house would be protected, whatever ends up being, whether it's in development down the road or RV park. Something will end up happening to the land, you know, eventually.
You have another forty acres. Do you have any thoughts right now about that?
Anything right now? You know, if you do an overflow, if it takes off well, if it's allowed, I don't know. It depends on how well this works, how well it takes off.
Jim, can you refresh as to the comprehensive plan for this area? I think we honed in on higher density residential housing than what was currently zoned.
That's right.
And that comprehensive plan was passed in two thousand and ten. You purchased this just a year ago, shortly after the town plan. As a frame of reference for what the town had planned as being appropriate for this area.
What did the towns decide that to be then?
A higher, a higher density than zone, how the residential housing.
Well, it's zoned for that currently, but the recommendation of the comprehensive plan was to go to a higher density for single-family residential.
That was just R two?
Also north of Plank.
That's correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
So that would just one fall in that district?
You're right. Right now, we're looking at, that area below Plank was, was to be, when you consider high density, high, we're not talking about apartments or anything like that, we're talking about higher than RE two. So it could have been half, three-quarter, one acre, yeah.
I just want to keep our perspective, because certainly we have that as a guideline, a very recent guideline, before you purchase the property.
But again, it's just an option, if this gets shot down, you know, eventually it would just become a housing tract down the road. Depending on the town, we're just promoting green space, and obviously we're promoting that recreation, you know, if it's a park, it's recreation. Seasonal.
Can, can we, can we keep that, this plan, if we promise? Jim, Jim Costello's.
I'll scan, give it right back to him.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
I get, I made copies of my signatures.
We certainly aren't making a decision tonight, and given that this is being taped live and it'll be replayed, it's often interesting to see what residents respond to after having meetings to some of it.
Directly involved, you know, that would be impacted, you know, so I'm going on the block, door to door, talking to them, spending a lot of time in each house, explaining.
Gary, so what, what makes you think this would be successful? Is it, are you, are you?
More research to do. I mean, I do have, I've talked to some, actually, the current ones who we bought the land from, actually bought a, a RV park out in Tavy area. And he's booked, before the first holidays, all the seasons, all his holidays were totally booked. And he, the seasonals that he has are, are fully occupied, and, yeah, he just says it's the best business he's ever run.
Ah, okay.
People are in great mood, they're on vacation, they pay in advance. And it's, it's, it's an easy business to run. He, I mean, he's, he's turning people away, he's turning them away from, before the first holiday, and that, obviously, that would help, you know, get started, you know, because you can promote my park.
Interesting.
My Latty Parks, there's one in New York there that's right on the expressway, I think it's a horrible location. Talked to, again, the president of Coney County, Canada, New York, he said the park's full all the time, and you see the expressway right behind you, and it's, it's always busy.
When you start a business, a park like this, do you become part, not a franchise, but you become part of a national network? You're a member of?
Follow New York State Campgrounds.
And then they have guidelines that you need to follow, or rules you need to follow to be a member of that?
You know, but when it gets closer, I can bring the, the president of the city to come and, and help me promote this, and he's got knowledge. Obviously, I don't have, she's been, you know, in these for years. He can give you a lot of information that I can't. I'm just, you know, starting out, trying to get a feedback of, if the town allows me to pursue this. And again, there's a lot of research I still have to do. I just, I just don't want to spend a lot of money trying to find out if it's, you know, has a shot of going.
Well, the right thing to do is to come in, you know, and, and have a discussion. Well, the right thing to do is to come in, you know, and, and have a discussion, you know, with this setting right here. I mean, that's what, that's what we encourage, you know, any, any developer or builder or whatever to come in here first, have that dialogue rather than spending money. And one of the things we hate to see is that someone spends a lot of money on engineering. No, no disrespect to any of the engineers in the office or in the audience, but as soon as, as soon as the phone rings, you know, the meter starts going. So having this dialogue and getting input, good, bad, or otherwise, really is the appropriate way to go. And, you know, certainly this, this is kind of a unique, you know, to, to most any community within Monroe County. Because I venture to guess that nobody has zoning for this today, or even some, some surrounding counties. So, you know, it'll require us to, you know, take a look at it, you know, revisit our comprehensive plan, take a look at what, what it is that, you know, the town envisioned, you know, in that area and to see how that all fits together. So, I mean, we're not.
Look around at the, you saying, who would use it? I mean, obviously a lot of retirees, you look at the density of the homes in the surrounding towns. For a retiree to have a place to come stay nearby instead of driving, you know, forty-five minutes or an hour to visit family and friends or the surrounding area, you know, gives them a place to close by, gives them, you know, the privacy of, of any campground. You look at all your sports, you know, you see when you're driving by a lot of these, these forward arenas nowadays, the parks, you see RVs sitting in, in, in the parking lots, you know, it gives them a place to, to stay locally when they're visiting grandkids, you know, playing sports.
So what would you see as the benefit to the town in that field?
Support the local economy. I mean, they're, they're staying here, they have to buy supplies and you can promote shopping, you know, the sightseeing, you know. They're coming here just to see the area, you know, they're not gonna come, they usually don't just sit, they're, they're touring a lot of the people. You see, I promote the area.
Okay. If, yes, if you could leave that with us, Jim, you know, can scan it so that, that we've got that for the files and, and we can get copies to the board members as well. And then, you know, over the next couple of, you know, work sessions, you know, we'll, we'll have it as a, an item on the agenda, a held item on the agenda. And, and, you know, what I would encourage, stay close with, you know, stay close with Jim. I know you, I know you and Jim have been having some conversations. Stay close with Jim and then, you know, the, the board will, you know, take a look at everything that, that you've presented. Sounds like Jim has been doing some research already, so we'll be looking forward to, you know, what we get fed back there. And then the board will close the loop, you know, back with you. And we'll do that in writing, as we do any and all folks that come here. So that you've got that, you know, either yes with modifications or no and the reasons why. And, but at least you've got that, you know, to close the loop.
Okay, because if they need to, like I said, I can bring a couple of people that are more knowledgeable with this, because again, this is all, you know, my beginning stages. People make some suggestions better than I can. I mean, I can get a hold of some people to do that. I just don't want to mention Jim, so just come in and tell them what I'm presenting now and see how that goes.
And, and certainly at some point, if, if the board believes that there's some value there, we'll, you know, we'll certainly get back with you on that as well and have that, have that conversation, so. Board, any other questions, at least at this point?
No, RV, I have no, I have no knowledge of RV campgrounds. Do RV campgrounds ever have, like, Boy Scout, Girl Scout campground availability at their sites?
I don't really answer that. Better to find out. I mean, is this something you could promote? I'm sure you could, maybe something to look into, to promote something like that. So again, it's, it's, it's at the beginning stages, I mean, a lot of stuff, something you could possibly incorporate.
Well, that kind of thing, you probably have to have a separate area, whether it's the area you're talking about with the loans.
Right, but you could, like, there's enough land, like you said, you could even, I mean, on the backside, create an area for something like that to create, promote that. Those are all just ideas.
Great. Thank you, Gary. If you could leave that, we'll get a scan and we'll get, get it back to you.
I'll give everything back.
That would be, that'd be fantastic. And then we'll just, Jim will get that back to you here, end of the week or early next week, so that you've got it for your files and records. Good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, continuing on with our agenda, under action items. We've got, the first item up is Mark's Pizzeria Site Plan Review. Had a public hearing last Wednesday. And so this is the first opportunity to have a discussion since that, since that hearing. And would invite Mr. Crane and any of his representatives to come, to come forward. And then with that, I would just ask Mr. Costello for a few words, I believe. Any, any additional comments that are input that you've received since the public hearing last Wednesday, Jim?
Thank you, Tony. We did have the public hearing last week. During that period of time, prior, prior to the public hearing and during it, we had submitted material to the landscape consultant for his comments regarding the proposal. And I'd sent you a material I had received from him yesterday. And I think we really need to spend some time internally with the staff to look at that, that recommendation. It is a substantially different design than what was proposed by the applicant. There's some positives to one side of it, there's some negatives to another. And I'm not even sure that we have the ability to do some of the things that were recommended in that plan, just based on some constraints that we have with DOT and the layout of the parking area. The other issue at hand was Mark and the owners of the property and Rick Pratt from CNB and I met this morning. CNB has some concerns about the potential, not so much for the Mark's site itself, but for the fact that their parking lot is in such close proximity to Mark's proposed building and access to the building. They are concerned that there might be the opportunity for individuals to park in their spaces and they don't have that many and they, and they need what they have to park in those spaces and then run into Mark's Pizzeria, thereby, you know, giving them the inability to use the spaces that they have. Mark and I think they were very cordial and, and looking at options as to how to solve that problem. One of the things we looked at even after Mark left this morning was the possibility with the area where the garage is and where their parking, the north side of their parking lot, if there was a way to somehow reconfigure to get additional parking in there. We don't know if that's the case at this point in time or not. We might get just the same amount of parking that we have right now if we reconfigure it. And it may or may not be as safe as it is, but we are gonna look at that as an option. Mark said he would look at it and certainly we will too. So there are some things that we have to look at. Some of the things we talked about at the public hearing is the fact that Mark has offered in, in move being allowed to utilize a portion of the park for outdoor dining. He has made some offers to do some maintenance or do some, you know, taking care of the park in some aspect or, or other. We haven't decided as to what that should be and I don't think he's decided or thought about what it truly should be yet. And I think we need to come to some consensus as to what that should be, so it's fair and equitable for both parties. I know he's been working with Jeff Benway. I know you had a meeting the other day and it was a very positive meeting in terms of dealing with some technical issues. Now, maybe I'll let you talk a little bit about the parking issues and that kind of thing that you worked out with Scott and with Mark. So there's some things out there that we have to work out. Mark has even offered to tie in a, a walkway area through the parking lot to get into the, into the Lindsay property to the north so that there's access for people to walk from the Pizzeria up to the Yocuny site. He's looking at it as an option. So there are a lot of things kind of dangling right now, but I wanted to bring those to your attention so that you knew that we are working through them. And we did tell Rick that, you know, we would work with him to get to a point where he's comfortable. Mark had offered to even identify an area along the property where the, where the parking lot is for CNB to kind of buffer that or use some type of landscape treatment to buffer it so you really can't park there and then get through to, to the Pizzeria very easily. We'll look at that as an option. So there's, there's some things left to be done, but I think all in all, I, I think everybody's moving in the right direction and, and, you know, we're gonna get to where we have to be at some point in time here. Jeff, did you want to just give a recap of the things you talked about with them yesterday?
Yeah, we just kind of had some concerns about the flow of traffic, especially when you're transitioning from a one-way pattern to a two-way pattern. What we talked about is creating some landscape barriers in this area that will, we could put stop signs and one-way only signage, just to avoid some confusion. The rest of it is just adding an additional catch basin to pick up some of the drainage. There's one here now, we probably put another one in there. Widen the sidewalk on this side just because of the overhang of the car. We want to provide a clear five foot for handicapped accessibility. And having a, a walkway from the outdoor dining that would tie into this side of the building. Everything else, pretty much the same as it is today.
As, as the board has just looked at the recommendations prepared by, I know Andy did because he actually got back to me yesterday. There's some things there, we worked really hard to try and break up that northerly property or that northerly building elevation because there really wasn't any room to do anything. The, the landscape consult, I'm sorry, the architectural consultant had made a comment where he wanted to see some type of plantings along the north side. There's no sun there to begin with, but secondly, I'm not sure there's enough room. Maybe you can, you can define that for us, Jeff. Is there even enough room to do anything with landscaping along that line?
There's this kind of open zone between the, the drive welling and the cars. Mark had thought this was useful because he wanted cars to be able to back out with interfering of cars entering, especially blindly from a five-mile line. We could push this up, this, these parking spaces up a little bit. Not sure if that would cause a loss of number of spaces, but it would allow you some space in here for.
What's the width of the driving lane?
Uh, this is twelve feet, this is fourteen-foot open space, but as you can see, it restricts down to zero at this point. So you, you only gain some landscaping probably in this area. This, this parking area, we talked about pushing this forward just so you don't have blindly backing out into traffic with cars here, which would increase this green space area a little bit. Or, as you just talked about with CNB, we could utilize some of this space for more parking.
Yeah, I think I was gonna, I hadn't had a chance to really spend time with you today. I spent a lot of time with them, but I think if you could take a look at that as an option to see if there's, if it's just gonna be a wash and it's just a different configuration, I don't think that helps anybody. But I think if, if you can pick up additional parking and encourage people to use it for Mark's. And even, I mean, if CNB wants to utilize it for overflow parking, Mark's already agreed to do that. I mean, he's very, very clear about that today, that he's looking to allow people to park there if they need to. But that would be helpful, I think, to Rick in particular, and to CNB in particular, to look and see if there's an opportunity to pick up some more parking. Obviously, we would lose some landscaping in that process. But if it solves some problems down the road for CNB and, and still keeps them viable in terms of.
So long as any overflow or shared parking were delineated as such, you know, we, we can sit here and say, oh, here's extra parking, but unless the customers actually know that, by somehow, that's, that's important to it.
And, and I, you know, as, as I said, Mark has already agreed to allowing them to park, CNB to park there. I think Rick's major concern is not so much for the general public, but if, if you have people who are in their seventies, eighties or have some infirmity of some type, they're not gonna want to park way back in Mark's parking lot versus being closer to the building. So that's, that's the issue at hand, I think.
I think landscaping could help with that. Makes sense.
Well, I, I think the key would be if there's a way we could reconfigure some of that parking to get more parking, it's gotta be safe parking too. It can't just be jammed in there, but it's, it is safe parking and it does help, you know, the bank and the Mark.
Well, remember, we have a constraint that's been applied to us by MCDOT concerning getting that entrance to the, as close to the northerly boundary line as possible.
Right, right.
I mean, ideally, I think if you wanted to create more parking spaces, if you could pull that back to more central to the aisle, you might, you might gain some more stalls there on the north side, but then that conflicts with what we've been directing.
Well, I don't think, I don't think CNB is looking at the north side. They're looking down where the old garage building, the block building is now to see if there's something they could do that, you could do to get more parking in that area. I'm not so certain you can. If, if it were a wider area to play with, it might be possible, but I think all we're really doing at this point in time without really knowing is just, you know, just reallocating parking for the same amount in a different setting. But we'll look at that and see what we can come up with. Mr. Benway's the best there is when it comes to tissue paper.
So, so CNB was asking for some sort of revisiting in the, in the southwest corner there where the concrete block garages? They're, they're looking for stack carpet or something?
What they're looking for is they're looking for some assurances that Mark's patrons will not be utilizing those spaces that they have right now directly behind the building. One of the things they were looking at also is if they had overflow parking in close proximity, in case that started to happen, they would have the ability to park some of their clientele in close proximity to what they have now and not have to be isolated or remote from that area by having to go to the north end of Mark's site.
Is the parking in the southwest corner there, to the, to the west of the bank, is that open parking for them, CNB, to use as well?
No, that is, that is owned by Starbucks and generally during the day, it's, it's pretty crowded down there. It really wouldn't help CNB, I don't think.
No, I think it's important to preserve the current parking allocation and what, you know, what the CNB customers are used to having there versus speculating as to, you know, where they're gonna figure out how to park.
Yeah. You know, and Starbucks has never said you couldn't park there. They've never done that. But there's no written agreement says they have to provide for it either.
Opportunity for signage for CNB parking only, signs to be installed.
We did talk about that this morning. We talked about the idea of putting those in place. And that's certainly an option and that's something we would look at. One of the big issues Rick brought to our attention is the fact that they do allow certain people to utilize CNB for, for certain seminars, that type of thing at different times, either in the evening or on weekends. And that might be an issue in terms of being able to solve the problem with the signage.
Maybe something can be written on their daytime parking, nine to five or something.
Well, and Rick was pretty clear about not wanting to tow cars either. I mean, it's not, it's not the mode they're into, so. I, I think, you know, we promised him that we will look at the options and see if there's anything we can come up with that's better in terms of that area there for him, and we'll certainly do that. That's something we'll bring back to the board as well. And, you know, as I say, Mark's been supportive of doing whatever it takes to make sure everything works for everybody in the neighborhood, so we'll just work to that end and see what we come up with for you.
Jim, I'm sorry, you, you mentioned, just in first blush, there may be some other concerns with the, the information we received today, the new architectural renderings from.
Well, the, the building design is substantially different and I, and I, and I really have to talk to the architect. I haven't had a chance today. I just, I, I know, I, I think I know what he was trying to accomplish. I think he was trying to put it some type of an Italianate design to the building to kind, kind of have it blend in with the, the building to the north at twenty-one oh five. I really have to talk to him about, you know, where he was thinking about and how he got to that point. But I also have to relay to him the fact that we, we may be more constrained with the use of the property than what he thinks we can do with it in terms of landscaping and that kind of thing.
Well, we went through, as, you know, Mark went through the steps with the Historic Preservation Board, you know, I think they weighed in as far as tying the theme and the style of the rendering that we have before, tie in with the south, southern properties. And we're looking more towards the four corners perspective, not just one particular building to the north.
One of the features I did like in the architect's plan was the fact that he had longer windows that gave more light to the building. It kind of opened it up a little bit. That's something we had not considered when we were, when we were actually putting something together initially. So I want to talk to him and to Mark about that. I, I think we actually need to sit down with Mark and go through the entire report and figure out what he likes and doesn't like and what we like and what we don't like and see if we can come to consensus as to what should be there. I also want to send that on to the Historic Preservation Board as well. You made a good point. They have to look at it. And they might like parts of it, they might not like parts of it. I think we need to all come to something, there's some what we like. Other than that, I think that's pretty much where we are. Unless anybody has any different thoughts from what I've been hearing tonight.
So I, I think we just need to, you know, kind of summarize a little bit. So we've got the plan to look at from Lopez, from, you know, from our, our consultant, we have to do that. You've had a, you've had a discussion today about parking, so there's some, some additional things that, am I assuming, Jeff, you and Scott are gonna, are gonna spend some time looking at and talking about that so that we maximize the parking safely. I think, I think that's the other piece that I heard, is making it safely. Taking a look at, you know, is there, at, at least in a, in a, in a couple of those spots there where additional landscaping may provide, you know, some, some clear buffering with the idea that, I'm, I'm guessing that, you know, the businesses, if, if you think about it, have a, have an opportunity to potentially complement. have a, have an opportunity to potentially complement one another in that, um, you know, I'm thinking when Mark's the busiest for, uh, the seating at his restaurant is a time when the bank is probably not up and operating. And, uh, during his lunch, during his lunchtime, uh, he'll tend to have more, uh, high school, you know, or young people traffic, uh, that do a lot of walking between, you know, the schools, uh, whether that be Finney or whether that be high school, uh, coming down, uh, for lunch. So that, uh, uh, my sense is just, you know, being in that area at, at different times, uh, more need for tra- more need for parking in the evening, uh, not as much need, uh, for, for parking, uh, at the lunchtime, uh, timeframe. Um, you know, so I think in that regard, uh, C N B and this operation certainly complements, uh, you know, complements one another because, uh, you know, the, you know, the busier time for the bank is during the day and they can use some parking, you know, for Mark, Mark's and vice versa, you know, in the evening.
One of the things Mark informed me at my meeting with him is that his business is seventy-five percent is delivery.
Yeah.
And all his delivery cars are gonna park across the street, so none of the parking you see will be occupied by his delivery.
Our, our discussions today though focused around the fact that Mark's busy time is probably about eleven thirty to one thirty or two. And ironically, the bank's is about eleven thirty-two, one thirty-two, so they do kinda mesh it down.
And there's gonna be additional seating now versus the current business.
It was interesting though, one discussion that we had that we hadn't thought about was Rick had indicated that, you know, people had used the parking in the past, not so much for Mark's, but primarily for the dog grooming operation. They park there and just walk to get their dog done. Uh, it was, it was an interesting conversation though because, you know, Mark noted that that business is gone. The hair salon is gone. And the tenants that are living, there were six apartments and those tenants are, are gone, they would be gone. So, so there's that component that comes out of the mix, but again, now you've got a component with fifty-two seats that come into the mix and it's, it's an issue of how everything meshes together and, you know, create conflict. But we will work with Canadago National. Mark's more than willing to do that and, um, and I think Canadago National and also the landlords were, you know, very much positive about getting everything resolved as a group, so we'll work on that.
So you got a little bit more work to do. Uh, we have our next work session, uh, which is on the twenty-seventh, uh, of this month. And, um, you know, the goal, I, I guess, um, I think it's safe to say, uh, as we work through the, the parking and some landscaping and some other things, uh, but all in all, uh, board is, has been supportive of the project overall. Historic Preservation Board has been, um, uh, supportive of that. So as we work through these details, uh, to, to be able to, uh, iron those out at our next work session, uh, or before, uh, from the twenty-seventh. And then if, uh, the board is comfortable with what they see in the discussion back and forth, uh, a resolution back to the board, uh, in the meeting in September.
And I'm supportive of, of Mark's efforts thus far. So I would caution that when, you know, we're taking a look at what the architect consultant suggested to not throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Right.
Or, yeah, not, not make Mark go through the steps again just because one person has weighed in with some, um, stylish, stylistic differences. So, um, I, I support, you know, the process that's gone through so far to get us to this point.
Yeah, and to, to Paul's point, um, Jim, the, the proposed, one of these diagrams that we received today or yesterday has sort of an interior blueprint. Is that, is that what Mark has proposed as an interior?
I, I gave, I gave him Mark's interior blueprint, uh.
So that is sort of the, the basis of what they envisioned so.
I think it is because Rob, what they did was he, um, he basically kept the windows on, you know, off the north base. So obviously he's kept that as the, the area of Mark was identifying as the kitchen area. But he didn't change the interior. I think he just needed to work around what he was trying to accomplish with the exterior.
All right, 'cause I, I, I'll just say that my first, my gut reaction with the parking issue is if you put a door on the north side where the parking lot is, that could probably cut down some of that. That's just my, I mean, I, I don't wanna redesign the building, but I, further you have to walk to the door. I mean, that may be.
If you'd be going out in the kitchen now, if you came in from the north.
Well, that's why I didn't know if this was Mark's proposed interior or if that was Chris's proposed.
No, that was, yeah.
No, that was Mark's. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, other questions, other comments?
I think we just need to continue working and, uh, make sure we work with C N B and.
So, uh, hopefully Jeff and, uh, and Scott can get together and, uh, take a look at, uh, take a look at, uh, that parking, uh, component, traffic flow, parking component. Um, the, the, the moving, the moving of the, of the access point, uh, my guess is, is that, um, our friends from the county are gonna be pretty, pretty firm on that just based on, you know, past discussions with them and, and what have you. So, I mean, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily, I wouldn't necessarily spend a lot of time trying to work through that un- unless Jeff, you got an indication from the county that.
I'll go call tomorrow and just see what they're saying.
But I'm, but I'm guessing they're gonna be pretty firm on where they are. And so there's no sense in wasting, you know, anybody's time, the applicant's, yours, uh, anybody's time on, on taking a look at, uh, that and then working with, you know, kind of what our known parameters are.
And just one last comment from my end. Um, we talked at the public hearing the other night about, uh, drainage, I'd say draining and making sure that drainage is addressed. You talked about doing a drainage nut, uh, in the property. You've agreed to location of the drainage nut, okay.
And, and I think that was when we were talking about some landscaped islands and some changes that now based on this discussion that, that may be adjusted a little bit more. So I, I think Jeff and I need another round with Mark to see what we can do.
Yep.
To get the best parking result we can.
Very good. Okay.
Yeah, best parking result, I think, and then the best goal, you know, so that it works, uh, for all, you know, because the, the goal obviously, um, you know, is for every, for everyone to, um, you know, be successful at, uh, these locations. I mean, that's the, that's the goal. And, uh, you know, being able to, to work together, you know, the cross-access easements, you know, those types of things certainly benefit that, that whole flow, uh, overall. Okay, good. Thanks, gentlemen. Always a pleasure, good to see you.
Thanks.
Uh, we'll move on to, um, twenty-one forty-six, twenty-one fifty-two incentive zoning site plan, Mr. Cause.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think, uh, in addition to the public hearing, one new thing that, uh, came in, I noted in my packet that came in today was, uh, the two thirty-nine M, uh, from the county.
That's right. Okay. The comments are, are standard comments. There was nothing outstanding that jumped out at any of us. It wouldn't normally have been in any, any packet that we received from them. So I think that where we are right now is, uh, oh, John's here tonight, good to see you.
Hey, good evening.
And, uh, I, you know, he's been working with Jeff and I think they still have some more work to do. You're still working on the underground proposal versus the.
I am, it's looking promising, but yeah, there's still more work to do to verify that that's, it's gonna be acceptable.
Very good. I see Mike's not, Mike Young's not here tonight. He said that he had a conflict, but I told him I would fill him in tomorrow. Uh, and again, we are working to, I know you did submit a landscaping and lighting plan. Bruce Zaretsky has that plan right now and he's looking at that. And I, my intent really is to have John, um, Dr. Flown, myself and Bruce meet with the neighbors that are most directly affected by this. And as we talk about later in the evening tonight, there is the other one coming in now. Um, so we'll take that as a package and put it all together to get a coordinated, uh, landscaping plan along those two properties and get that tied together. So that's something we have to do for you before, you know, we move forward.
Sure.
Jeff, is there anything that jumps out at you that?
No, I'm, it's still in development, but the general layout works fine with our concept plan.
Everything ti- everything ties together well, uh, again, from a cross-access easement standpoint and, uh, pulling that all together to the north, uh, overall, so that, uh, we're good, uh, we're good with that.
Mm-hmm.
Just, uh, just mention a couple of things, um, over the past week. I did speak to Bruce Zaretsky yesterday morning.
Excellent.
And, um, I know you had mentioned kind of calling a meeting with, with him, the client and myself and the neighbors. And what Bruce had said, well, he didn't say no, he, he just said typically he'll issue comments first and then, um, with those comments in hand, you know, then such a meeting would typically.
Yeah, we'll review those comments and we'll do that with you, but I, I do wanna keep those neighbors tied in. It's the, it's the one nexus from the beginning of this project to the end that, uh, you know, we've promised them from day one we would take care of them and, and, you know, I'm gonna keep that promise. So, but we will do that. We'll sit down with you and with Dr. Flown, go through that just to make sure everybody's on the same page and then we'll go on and approach the neighbors.
Okay, very good. And, and the other component, just again, uh, things we've worked on the past week. We, uh, relation to extending that road to the north through the car wash property, we've got our surveyor. He's got a schedule for hopefully middle of next week to get out there and, and pull the survey from the adjacent property so that we can design that road coming up and it'll tie into the, uh, I guess it's the kind of McDonald's access or what, I think it is.
That's great. And, and the other one that I wanna talk to you about is, uh, Dr. Flown had brought photographs of what similar Chipotle operations in the Rochester area and I, I think this is probably the one from Jefferson, I'm not sure.
Put that up on the wall.
That'd be great.
My, my comment, my comment to you.
Cause there's multiple ones.
Yeah.
Well, my comment to you is though that John actually had, uh, was given by Dr. Flown some alternative designs really on, uh, before he came to the board.
Thanks, Jeff.
And I, I think I'd like to have you, if you could send those to me, the email. I'd like to send those on to the board for review. There, there are different designs. I, I think you should have an opportunity to look and see at various designs and see how they fit and what's happening. And, um, you know, you can take a look at those and see what you like and don't like and we can go from there. But I think it's important to see that.
If I recall correctly through the discussion, there's maybe three different designs, three different, uh, building, building designs. And I think, uh, getting the right one or the best one for that, uh, for that area.
And this may be very well key to that, but we don't know that yet, you know?
In reference to the, the proposed full ingress egress there on this, on this property, i- is there still, refresh my memory, Jim or Jeff, is there still a right out only from the Panera?
That was only a temporary, um, access just so that it would, in case there was a need to get people out. It was only during the first phases of the site construction.
Okay, so.
So that'll be eliminated.
So between this ingress egress, the next one's the traffic hub.
Exactly.
And of course, what he's trying to do is he's trying to maintain, actually he's trying to relocate the existing Reese driveway which is in here somewhere.
Right.
He'd like to relocate that. And it, and actually initially when we talked in a couple of years to the owners that were around back then, but there was a concern that, you know, there was too much access to the site other than the, uh, signalized intersection. But with the number of, uh, drive-through windows and with the safety of the daycare center, I think it's good to have that, that alternate access point out at two fifty, uh, to keep as much traffic away from that back area as possible, so.
It's probably a little different now because it, before it was more of a strip plaza type.
That's true. It's, it's a different setting than it used to be, that's absolutely correct.
It's more cut up now.
And, and of course, the D O T's gonna make the decision what it is anyway. If it's either full-blown access or if it's gonna be right in right out, they'll make that decision, so.
And, and what, what is, what is their, what has their feedback been so far?
From the D O T?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, they're supportive. They've, they've issued a letter of support. They're looking for design plans at this point to make, uh, um, you know, comments and approval, final approval. But it's two different departments within the D O T, but the, the department, they kind of, more of the traffic department is, is who I received the letter from and, and supportive of a full, full intersection, full access, not only right in, right out, but, uh, full access intersection.
Okay.
And the driveway, now, uh, just, maybe it's a small point. Um, the driveway is actually not the Reese's driveway, it's the one to the south that was from the prior home, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you're driving by there.
It is the highest point in the road.
Yeah, from a site distance standpoint.
It's the ideal location.
That's the ideal location. And then, and then, uh, what if any, what if any cut, I mean, we had talked about at the public hearing, what if any, uh, cut, cutting would have to be done to the north? Um, so as you would be exiting north, uh, is there any additional cutting that might have to be done to that, to the land?
There's kind of a berm there now that I, we've talked about having that lower, just so that you have better site distance.
Okay, all right. All right, um, what else, uh, board? So we're, we're gonna have an opportunity to get a couple more snapshots of, uh, you know, some different, uh, building, uh, what, what that looks like, uh, building facade. We're working on, they're working on some, uh, things with the, the D O T. Um, it sounds like, uh, Fletch and, uh, company are, are still doing some thi- or excuse me, uh, Jeff and, uh, company are still doing some things with storm water management. Get that taken care of as soon as you, you know, continue your work, uh, John, to, to get that in.
I owe Justin information he can, uh, he can review and, and comment on.
Okay, great, excellent, excellent.
And we will look at the landscape before you.
And we'll look at the landscaping, that'll be, that'll be good, okay. Anything else that jumps out at this point, uh, that we either need from, uh, John or the, or Dr. Flown?
I think we just need John and Jeff to come to some consensus as to what's appropriate for underground storage at that location, if they can do it.
Okay, we'll make that.
We can move forward and finalize the landscaping.
Is that the priority?
Sure.
You said you got county, uh, county comments today?
We did, uh, as a matter of fact, I give you these right now. If you'd like, we probably are gonna get them email or more.
I was gonna say, you gotta some extra segments.
Because there's nothing outstanding, it's just doing normal permit processing that you have to do.
Okay, beautiful. Okay, staff, anything else? John, anything else, uh, from your, uh, from your end?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Uh, thank you very much, thank you for your, for your time.
You're welcome.
Okay, uh, that will take us, uh, into, uh, the review of the Panera Bread sign package, Mr. Cause.
I sent you an email.
Thanks, Jeff.
On July twenty-ninth, uh, with a comment regarding the package. And in that, in that package, they're providing you with numerous signs for the site, many of which are directional signs, which we have no problem with. The one that jumps out at me is the fact that, um, right now, because of the size of the building, they are entitled to have one hundred and forty-three point thirty-three square feet of total signage, okay? They're asking for, uh, wall-mounted signs, they're actually asking for four wall-mounted signs where one is permitted by code, normally permitted by code. And they're proposing an eighty-one point nineteen square foot Panera Bread sign. It's a sign like Panera Bread in the packets. It's a sign right here, which is their standard business identification sign. They're also proposing that on the south face of the hill, as you drive in down the hill, you'll see that as you look off to your left. Um, those signs, um, actually makes sense to have, obviously you want a signage along two fifty so you can see where the building is and then when you come in, you wanna see that that's what you're looking at. My one comment to you is that normally, they're, they're showing two drive-through signs underneath the main sign. Those signs are not business identification signs, they're not the intent of a wall-mounted sign. You will, as you come down the hill, you will immediately see a sign saying drive-through this way, okay? So they're going to have more than adequate, uh, drive-through signage to get people safely to where they need to be. Um, if they were to take that signage out, they would still be over signage by thirty-nine point six-five square feet. It's just that the signs are bigger than normally expected. If they brought the signs down, two things would happen. Number one, it would not be visible because you remember, uh, that road comes down, or I'm sorry, the property comes down lower than what the road is. So it's, it's probably not a bad thing to have the signage the size they're proposing it.
Plus it's also a real blank space.
It is, that's the other part of it. The, the building's designed in such a way where there are large panels that, it's just what you're dealing with with Mark's P three building right now, as a matter of fact, so.
What was the ultimate resolution with Jeremiah's? They were given one affr- above their front door and then.
They're going to have a marquee sign out on two fifty, which is out there now, and they're gonna have a small sign over their front door saying Jeremiah's.
What about a directory? Are they gonna be a part of the directory?
They are gonna be part of directory and actually this is gonna be part of the directory as well. And they comply with that, that component of, of the signage.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they actually show that in their package, so that's not the issue. I, and, and really, I think.
And, and Jeremiah's was within code, uh.
Yes, they were.
Within square footage or less.
Yes.
Yeah, because what's gonna happen is, you know, is when we start handing the sign packages for all the neighboring northern parcels, we're gonna have probably the same issue because the west face of those buildings is pretty darn bland.
That's right. And, and actually with Dr. Flown's buildings, you're gonna be in the same situation because you've got, you've gotta identify the building in the front to get them there and then when they pull into the back, they're gonna have to see who's, who's in that location. It's not a, I mean, it's not unusual for us to do that, we've done it in the past.
But what we heard from, what we heard from Flown though, if you recall, uh, Flown said that the front of the building and the back of the building were gonna look the same.
Yeah.
He was gonna, he was essentially, the way he was gonna do it, he was gonna present, so he didn't have essentially the, the back.
The Panera situation.
Yeah.
And that's why I wanted to see other alternative designs, uh, for those buildings, just to get a better feel for what, what it should be or could be, so. So in essence, uh, right. So in essence, right now, if they were to take, my, my feeling is they should not have, they should not have the drive-through sites on the buildings themselves, on the building itself. I think that there would be more than adequate signage to get them to where they have to be. And they say there will still be a little bit over, but because of the size of the building and the way it's laid out, those signs will probably be, you know, in scope or in scale with the rest of the building.
Well, just play devil's advocate, permit. We didn't, we didn't design the building that big, so.
Well, we did approve the building that big though.
But that doesn't mean we have to approve the sign package.
No, I mean, you could, you could scale it back down if you'd like. I mean, if you wanted them to knock off thirty-nine point sixty-five square feet, you could do that. And, you know, they could submit a new sign package showing how they do that.
That's kind of where I am.
They're asking for more.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to see what it looks like because, you know, we're, we're holding other businesses within that same development to some standards here. And we're going to have three or four more new ones coming in. And, you know, again, they're going to want to have signage on, on two faces plus a directory at least.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, absolutely. They'll all want signs in the front and the back.
Okay.
So if your direction to me is to go back and have them prepare a plan that identifies compliance.
Compliance.
And the board is supportive of taking off the drive-through signs on the walls.
That's correct.
Do it.
That's what I need to hear.
Copy.
Okay, we'll take care of that tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
And we'll anticipate, we'll anticipate that they will in fact be willing to come back at the next work session.
I'm sure you'll probably get a package from them the day after tomorrow.
Guessing. Good, very good. So we'll, we'll show this as a held item.
Absolutely.
All right, the next item is transfer of ownership, gold and coin exchange, eighteen thirty-three Penfield Road.
Yes, the gentleman caught me for a minute and said that he had to go. And I recommended that he give a gentleman a phone call tomorrow morning.
And just give the board background.
For, for this particular item?
He was here earlier.
And when I went to go talk to my son, he caught me for a minute.
Got it.
And said he had to run, he had a personal matter he had to take care of. And asked what my recommendation is. And I said, "Call Jim Costello tomorrow morning."
Perfect, perfect. I like that.
I told him the next work session's in two weeks, but he should communicate with Jim Costello as his next steps.
I'd just like to go through it with you, just to give you background, so we can talk about it again. Since Sean Carey was a gentleman who was here earlier, Sean actually worked at the jewelry and coin exchange at eighteen thirty-three Penfield Road. The, and you've got an email from Anthony Marsucci. He's going to basically turn that business over to Sean. They've got other sites that they're working on now, and they cannot staff this site with what they've got in terms of continuing to operate. Actually, that business has been closed down for maybe six weeks or so at this point in time because they, they don't have enough staff and Sean's, you know, Sean's the one there at this point in time. Sean is willing to take this over, get more staff in there to keep it going. And his request was to ask you to go through a streamlining process based on the fact that he's there, he's been there, and he will continue to be there. It kind of makes sense.
Sure.
That was the issue at hand. So obviously, you want to talk to him.
It's really a change of ownership. There's no, from what, from what the information we got, there's, nothing is going to be changed hours-wise, signage-wise.
Everything's the same.
Name, the name will be the same.
Everything's exactly as it was.
And just the personnel and the ownership will be the same.
Just in the same or something like that, isn't it?
Well, they are going to turn the business over to him. I mean, he doesn't own the property because obviously the property is owned by the Thompson family, but he will own the business outright, so. So what I'm hearing from you is now that you have some background, you want to bring him back in for a few minutes, talk to him, get a feel of who he is, what he wants to do.
I, I think it would be just good for us to do that at our next work session.
Under the streamline.
And I'll bring him in as a guest.
Unless we hear something different, we'd, we'd treat it as a streamlined. If he comes in and has some grand ideas of, you know, adding this and bumping out that and doing this and what have you, then, then we reserve the right to go, to go broader, if we need to.
Alright, so I'll get him in here on the twenty-seventh. We'll put him in as a guest and get him in, at least so you can get him out.
Okay.
And then we'll get him.
Very good.
Alright.
Yep.
That'll take us to public works action items. And we've got a request for an encroachment, fence encroachment and a drainage easement at Seton Court, forty-eight Seton Court.
Yep, Mr. Gussling is here. He's the resident requesting to occupy storm sewer easement with fencing and some landscaping of the property. He's proposing to put a pool facility in the back. This Seton Hall, Seton Court is off of Scribber Road. It's FedEx track. The lot is right here. It's lot fifty-two. He's requesting to do a backyard improvement. We do have an existing ten-foot drainage. He's been here. There's a twelve-inch storm sewer pipe and a catch basin here in the back. Again, the property's about a hundred and five feet. So what I represented here is about where the center line of the property is. It actually, scale-wise, would extend outside the limits, so.
I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Yeah, it's just, he wanted to put the fence over as far as possible because he does have to fence around a pool. And he does show some landscaping along this right away.
But can't put it over the pipe.
Well, exactly. The pipe is two and a half feet deep here and seven feet.
Almost by necessity that he needs to.
We try to discourage certainly fence posts because in the past, we've had people put them through the pipe.
Right.
Which doesn't work really well. He understands that. He's looking to see how much he can put it within the limits of the fence. Looking at the two depths, the pipe's probably about four feet deep at this location. So we could, to dig a hole through it to access it and have to do a repair, typically you assume the depth is the width. So if it's four feet deep, you want about a four feet off the center line of a pipe to do basic repairs. The important thing is also is be able to walk back here to that pipe for periodic inspections as well. Lot of maintenance can be done through the street and simply flush truck pushing the debris out.
Any issues with setbacks or anything like that?
Uh, no, there's no setback for landscaping or just structures, you know, if it's a shed or something.
Okay.
I'll, I'll send this around. You can see the, the house is, oops, I'm sorry. It's this way. The adjoining house is, is on the cul-de-sac.
Up north.
Yeah, I was pointing the wrong house.
So I see what Andy was saying was that the only issue is this is a...
It'd be a whole, whole harmless agreement for him to put a fence in an easement.
Well, the other part of that though, too, is because the landscaping's in the easement area, if you have to go in and dig up that area to put a new pipe in, landscaping goes away and...
Well, the whole harmless agreement basically, it just, you know, tells you that if we have to dig it up, you got to put it back in.
It's on me.
If you want to put it back, yeah.
Right.
I mean, realistically, there's, there's no extension of that. It's just a backyard drain.
Right, right.
If, if it's three feet off, four feet off, we can access it. Most maintenance is done through the pipe system, through manholes.
Any impact to the neighbor, neighbors?
The only thing you'll see on that drawing is the neighbor's kind of on the cul-de-sac. His house sits a little bit farther back than theirs and it's a slight skew to it. Have you talked to that neighbor?
I have not. I have not. That pipe, I believe, is, I don't know if it's on both of our property lines.
It's right on the property line, strictly.
Yeah.
Well, you'll let your neighbor use your pool, right?
Absolutely.
Just like you were asking, what kind of trees are you planning along the property line?
Um, I don't know. Gary Smith is my landscaper, actually.
Sounds like he has plenty of trees.
Yeah, yeah, he's got them, so. That's right.
Five hundred to choose from.
That's right. So he actually put that plan together.
The order that I asked at is because the board had a gentleman a couple of weeks ago who was concerned about trees encroaching over on his property from his neighbor, which is becoming an issue. And we don't want to be here fifty years from now with you standing there.
Oh, wait, no, no.
Your next door neighbor, your next door neighbor's saying, "What'd you guys do fifty years ago?"
That's more of a maintenance issue.
Yeah, I think you just want to make sure that there are trees that are going to be respective to the neighbor's property.
Okay.
Site constraint reasons why it's skewed to one side or the other, just trying to preserve some?
I wanted to preserve some yard for my children, yeah, yeah.
They do take a lot of land, don't they?
They do, they roll.
And then from one in-ground pool to another, make sure the trees have, don't have things that fall into your pool in a profuse amount all at once.
Those are cottonwoods, aren't they? Black one.
Yeah.
So, so Jeff, this is right, right here. That's the ten-foot, that's the ten-foot easement right here. This is the property line, ten-foot easement. And, and the pipe is roughly, roughly right on, right on this property line here. So there's another ten-foot. Ah, yeah. And there's another ten-foot on the other edge.
Jeff, if you don't see any concerns from maintenance or, you know, safety standpoint, I'm fine with it.
No, you know, pushing the fence over maybe two or three feet. That keeps the pool.
He started at four. Now, you need to give us a recommendation.
Okay, four would be it.
Okay.
Four would be it.
So four feet from the fence can be, that'll be the distance.
Yes.
Any, any, everybody hear that last dialogue between Linda and Jeff about the fence location? Everybody's?
A recommendation from Jeff for a number, how many feet that he has to work with there for the fence from the pipe. He said four feet.
Because it's the ability to walk, me, the neighbor does the same thing. I've got eight feet to walk back there and do inspections.
And we've got ten feet.
Without getting bitten by dogs.
We've got ten feet on the neighbor's property too, for you.
Right now, we have ten, yeah.
Right.
Alright, I'll prepare the agreement and it over to you.
Great.
It's a resolution item?
It would be a, it would be, it would be a resolution that we'll have to do, review it by Horowitz. And then, and then, you know, certainly in there, you know, the, you know, some of the, some of the conditions that we want to have in there is that, you know, before the fence installer, whether that be Mr. Smith or others, that they make contact with the engineering department so that we've got a stakeout. And because, you know, the fence won't be the expensive part. It'd be that, that, that pole that goes down through the storm sewer, that'll be the expensive part. So we want to make sure we kind of minimize that, that opportunity, so. And you can get that in for Friday?
Yes.
Okay, we'll get it before the board next Wednesday.
Alright, we'll do.
Anything else? Staff, board, all staff? Okay, great. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming in.
No problem.
Okay, we'll go to fourteen sixty-nine Jackson Road. And we've also got fourteen sixty-nine Jackson Road land dedication as a held item. But I want to take items two and three because they kind of go together. I mean, that discussion kind of goes together, so. So fourteen sixty-nine Jackson Road, that's been a held item for a while. And then the special improvement district pond issue. And then we also have a discussion about the DeAngelo subdivision that, which prompted this as well, which I believe is the Bayview, Bayview Landing sub? Yes, no?
No, no, no.
Uh, no, fourteen sixty-nine is DeAngelo's.
Is DeAngelo, okay. Alright, so with that, with that, we're back at it. This is Rob's favorite conversation because it deals, deals with, you know, obviously special districts.
Councilman Morris here last time, so I wanted him to have the opportunity to enjoy this with us. Right. So this application, which kind of segue back into the special improvement pond ownership district is fourteen sixty-nine Jackson Road. It's an application currently pending before the planning board. It's for an eleven-lot subdivision. And as part of that, they're proposing dedication of the southern piece, which is the pond lot and a small strip finger that would have been an extra wide right-of-way. We thought it better to keep the right-of-way normal and then have that extra piece. We've looked at these in the past a couple of different ways. I know Jeff had a memo back from two thousand and six. We've actually gone through these discussions about different potential ownership methods. One being a homeowners association, one being private ownership, and then one being ownership by the town. What we've looked at and discussed most recently amongst staff is creation of special improvement districts. That would be a taxing entity capability that if they wanted a higher level of maintenance or something in the future, the residents of that neighborhood would pay into a fund as they would a sidewalk fund or anything else that, you know, they would pay for the maintenance of their own pond. And then maybe higher level of, you know, if they wanted a fountain or something else higher, you know, you would have the ability to, to raise that assessment, excuse me, that fee in that district to offset that cost. So I know we've, we've looked at different methods. And I know one currently that I, I think we spoke about last time, that may be coming back before this board. The most recent homeowners association that I can remember is Camden Park. That district currently is, is not functioning the best that I understand it. They haven't collected fees in quite a bit of time. We expect they may be coming to this board shortly to petition to have that HOA abandoned and then would have to do something similar to take over the open lands for those parcels as well. There's two ponds in that, in that neighborhood.
And I think that's the only subdivision we have right now. I could be wrong. It's the only single-family detached subdivision that we have that's in a homeowners association. We have several that are in townhouse developments and that type of thing. But there is no, no other subdivision that has a homeowners association.
Single-family detached.
That's right.
Detached.
Meadowbrook is in an HOA.
Which one is?
Meadowbrook.
Over on?
On Scribber Road.
On Scribber Road, right.
Problem they're having, as Mark alluded to, is that nobody wants to take the responsibility to collect the fees. Nobody's wanting to come up. And I guess I wouldn't want to do it either if I were them. But in any event, they are looking at the opportunity of, when you make a decision as to how you want to handle it, they will petition you to come in and follow the process that you develop. They will then, after going through that process, they will then go to the estate attorney general's office and have the homeowners association to be suspended.
Okay, so let's not get too far down that path because that's not, that's not upon us this evening. Let's try to eat the salmon one bite at a time. So, you know, the issue at hand, we know, we started, we had a conversation, I think around the time, with Ashlyn, Ashlyn Rice. We had that discussion. There was a sign issue and what have you. And Jeff had put the draft booklet together, or Jeff and the, and the PRC had put it together. And, you know, then, you know, the thing has set until we get poked again. And so we're poked again. And I think we need to, you know, figure out what it is that we want to do and how we want to do it. And then that way we can, and also the, you know, the planning board for some of the things that they're doing and they've got before them. And then certainly helps the staff from an overall direction standpoint, so.
We have one of these districts at Abington.
Yep, it looks like you're chomping at the bit.
We have one of these at Searle Point. We've created them. There's no charge right now.
Right.
We have the ability to charge. And again, those extra charges would be if a large percentage of the people in the district wanted it, but it's pond treatment. And the next watershed meeting, we're probably going to see a couple of residents from Newbury Park who are ballistic about the smell and appearance of the stormwater ponds in the back of their yards. So, and unfortunately, this, this always, I keep telling them, the town's not going to pay to make it beautiful or smell nice, but this gives them an opportunity to put in herbicide, algae sides, fountains.
That they pay for.
That they, it would all be on the cost of the people within that subdivision.
We keep focusing on the betterment issues. It's not even the betterment issues. It's somebody has to mow the grass around these ponds. It's basic maintenance is what it is starting off. If they want to do the niceties in life, that's a different level. But right now, you know, Ronnie Williams knows what it costs to mow the lawn around a pond based on how big the pond is. That's what they're actually paying for on a year-to-year basis. If they want to do something more than that, that's their choice to do.
They do it twice a year.
And we do it twice a year. If they want it done more, then that assessment goes up a little higher for that district if that's what they want. They make that decision. It's not us. But we give the basic amenities to them and, you know, then they make a decision after that. So it's, it's not even the betterment. It's just day-to-day maintenance. It's, it's a...
To make sure the pond is functioning as it's designed, not as it's designed to be.
We do that. That's all we care about is the function.
Or if something runs into the sign.
Somebody wants it to look like...
Yeah, I mean, it's going to look like...
Can't dig a lake, then let them pay for it.
That's another story. But, but if somebody hits their sign, you know, and the sign has to be replaced, that's one of the amenities included in the district. Or if they want a cul-de-sac on the land, yeah, that's got to be maintained. Those are all costs that come right off the top of that, that district.
We also talked in the past about trails. And the Trails Committee maintains some trails. We have some like at Meadowbrook where they've gone into abandonment, pretty much. The HOA's not taking care of them. The town of Penfield's not taking care of them. And that's another issue that we had brought up previously. This would allow for those trails to be maintained as the residents who are the primary user would be able, as they would want. So it's, there's a lot of amenities that maybe we wouldn't do the level of maintenance that they may want. And if not, the charge is zero. We're not making money on it. We just want to reimburse our cost to manage the payment to a contractor and properly collect it.
And the fact that we don't benefit from some of the amenities, I mean, we shouldn't be paying those as residents, so.
Yeah, but I think, I think the concern I have is, I mean, the way that Jeff just kind of put it is it's not an ongoing thing. It's sort of, if one year they decide they want to have three new trails put in, then all of a sudden...
it's appearing as if the town of Penfield is charging them another five thousand dollars apiece because they would like to have new trails put in. So it's like a one-time, it, it could just randomly.
No, it's not a one-time, it's, it's an ongoing process because there are other things in that subdivision that need to be taken care of.
But not if it's at zero.
It should, it'll, it'll never be at zero, that, that's what my friend does.
Well, it is right now.
It is right now.
Only right now, but in the next, in the next tax program that they have for that, that area, we're gonna have to sit down with them. When you create these, these districts, now they've got an HOA, that's not going to happen right now, but for, for this one, for instance, we would have to sit down with them and say, we're gonna maintain your pond, we're gonna maintain the, the area around the cul-de-sac, we're gonna maintain your sign. You're gonna pay for that and you're gonna tell us, you know, we're gonna tell you how much it's gonna cost you on a year-to-year basis to do that. But the second those houses are built, somebody is gonna go into that, that taxing district, it has to. Because even if you're talking about maintaining a sign that might not even be in, in disrepair for fifteen years, when that fifteenth year comes up, you don't want to hit them for twenty-five hundred dollars in one fell swoop. You want to be able to take that money out and deal with it because you've been collecting it for fifteen years so they don't get hurt by it. That's gonna happen in every, uh, special improvement district.
We currently populate the sidewalk districts at thirty dollars a year. And, you know, so it generates some amount in there, so as replacements come up, ten years, twenty years down the road, you have some money to, you know, to allocate to that. If the higher level is needed, then obviously those could be adjusted in the future to meet that need.
And we do the same with the intensified lighting districts.
Right, I think.
Which could all be rolled in together.
I, I think when we last discussed this, I was okay with continuing conversations about new potential special improvement districts such as this one that we're looking at. As far as current neighborhoods looking to slide into this after the fact, I don't think I'm in favor of that. I, I think that creates many problems, there, there are other avenues that, that residents have to bring concerns to the board or bring them to the staff, but.
It's much easier to create a district when the sole owner is the developer, perhaps, the developer.
Well, then there's, there's a reliability, there's a, the reliance that those, the homeowners can have when you're, you know, entering into it, it's already established, you.
But if you had, if you had a, a neighborhood that is not in an association and it's not in a district of any type, and say they have a pond, it's been, you know, it's been a problem to them, and they petition you, they send a petition and everybody signs it and says, we agree that we would like to create a district, we're more than willing to pay whatever it takes to get that water in a better state, whether it's aeration or herbicides or whatever it might be, we're willing to pay that, why would you not?
I think we have a duty to, to consider it.
Absolutely.
I think you'd have to set the threshold higher than fifty-one percent, I mean, it should be sixty, seventy-five percent.
Oh, it'd have to be, I think our current code.
To make sure it's a, it's a vast majority that are in favor of it.
Yeah, you wouldn't unless there was an overwhelming majority of people that want it.
We looked at establishing a sidewalk district, um, I know Silverwoods, um, was looking at one point in time, and I think our code said seventy-five percent of the residents and seventy-five percent of the assessed valuation had to sign and agree to, to be part of that before the district would even be formed. So that would put the onus back on the neighborhood to say, hey, if you're all for it and you can get seventy-five percent of the group to come forward, petition the town, you know, then the town board would consider, you know, creating a district in an existing area.
Well, personally, I wouldn't look at that petition any differently than Jomanda Way or the sewer proposal on Parkview. I mean, that would be up to us to make that, that call, for good or for bad, but, uh.
But I think you're gonna see that happening, whatever we come up with is the final answer, you're gonna see a couple of neighborhoods, and one in particular that we know of already is going to come to you and say, we just can't sustain ourselves on a homeowners association, we need to do something where we know you're gonna collect those, those dollars from us and we're gonna get them every year. They're not getting those dollars right now.
Right.
Good argument.
So. So where are we?
Yeah, I, I'm still having a hard time with the, the thought that, and I don't want to say don't give them the option, but I'm having a hard time with why the town needs to necessarily give them that option. If the town, if the pond is supposed to work functional, so the water drains and it's working the way that we require it to work, then to some respects, I, I don't actually know why it would be beneficial to really anyone, the homeowners or the town, to down the road, let them start putting aeration units or anything else, because at some point you're gonna have new ownership. The, the, the part, the, the mechanics could go into disrepair, the town is then going to have to start maintaining or let it go into disrepair and then remove it, whether it's a sign or narration, benches, trails, whatever.
But it's not even that, it's, it's the fact that once that pond is built, uh, sedimentation occurs on a yearly basis in all these ponds, based on what's happening with the watershed. At some point in time, the pond's gonna have to be cleaned.
But we already do that.
Yeah, the point is we're paying for it.
But I consider that routine maintenance for its function.
Like the Glenbrook situation.
Yeah, and, and then the other part of it is, you know, every, every month or so, that pond has to be mowed. There's no reason why anybody here or anybody out in the viewing area should be paying for a benefit that they're getting. So, I mean, that is what you're, that's what they're paying for in their district, they're paying for the fact that that's being maintained by us, but they're paying for it. The whole town should be paying for their benefits, is what I'm saying.
Well, it makes sense.
Yeah, right on, I, I agree with.
That's a bargain for exchange of you buy property near a pond or in a development that has a, a pond or a facility that needs maintenance, that's part of the, the, it's part of your, your cost of, of owning property.
It, it might cost, it might cost two hundred dollars a year to maintain ponds the way they have to, just to be functional. I mean, just to mow the grass and make sure that the outfalls are working properly. But that two hundred dollars a year should come out of the people who benefit from it, it should come out of everybody in town here. And then if they want more of that later on, that, there is an option for them to do it, but again, I mean, they, they may not be willing to pay for it once they find out how much it's worth.
You opt in if you want something more, if you want a nice fountain, if you want a nice fountain and, uh, you want to aerate the pond or you want to put some, um, chemicals, herbicides, uh, things like that in there, uh, then that, that gets borne by those folks that benefit. Not, not Mark who lives, you know, on one end of the town and Jeff who lives on the other end of the town.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm fine with that, I think that's a good approach for any new development, like the one that we see right here. The only caveat I have, and I think this is important, is the disclosure of that when people buy a particular lot and start building their house.
Right.
So they need to know that when they go in, they meet with the builder, or I don't know what process it need, where it needs to be, but they need to know that seventy-five dollars a year, fifty dollars a year, twenty dollars a year on their tax bill, cause anybody who builds a house is gonna figure out real quickly what their new property tax is gonna be. It's gonna go towards the maintenance or whatever it is, however it's worded, of the pond that supports that new development, that they're building a housing.
And that's, and that's the process that you go through when we set a public hearing. Prior to that, you receive a petition, in that petition, we have to work with those property owners to know where it is they're gonna be paying on an annual basis. Now, that might change later on down the road as they want more improvements, but initially to cut that grass, to make sure that that outfall structure's working properly, and if, if they have a sign that they're taking care of, we might put a couple of dollars a year in for that sign over a period of time, then they'll, they'll, they won't be beaten to death.
I think, I think Andy's point is well taken, I think you're also, you're focusing more on those who come after the developer. The developer certainly is aware, it's, but when, it's when, it's when I want to build a house there.
How many, how many lots are on that development?
Eleven, there's eleven lots.
So all eleven lots, if Andy Moore decides to buy one of those lots, this town needs to make sure that that developer tells that, tells me as the new owner of that lot, that this is what your annual charge is gonna be, and so I sit there and say, well, why am I paying thirty-five dollars, fifty dollars a year? Well, if you want to build a house in this development, this pond is gonna support the drainage of this development and that's what the thirty-five, fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars a year goes to support, is the cleaning of the pond, the mowing of the pond, and the maintenance of the pond. Now, down the road, if you decide and your neighbors decide that you want to add all of these, you know, frills to the pond, waterfalls, all that kind of stuff, you can talk about increasing that amount with your neighbors. But to me, the most important thing and the absolute critical part of this is that every single one of those owners of that lot, of these eleven lots, understands that from the very beginning.
And understands.
So they don't come into this town board five years from now, or ten years from now, when the developer's long gone and he's made his money and says, this needs to be cleaned and the town needs to come in and do A, B, C, and D, and we're sitting there, but, but why would we ever want to put ourselves in that position?
Well, what happens is after you have your public hearing and you've decided to create the, the district, you sign an order, okay? That order does two things, it gets recorded at the Monroe County Clerk's Office, which identifies exactly what they've got to pay on an annual basis. It gets recorded in the clerk's office, which now goes into the abstract, uh, for the property. So when somebody goes to buy the second time, or even the first time, but the second, third, or fourth time, their attorney will get the abstract, entitled abstract from the clerk. In that, in that document, it'll identify the fact that there is a fee that's associated with this, and this is why it occurs.
Right.
It also has to go to the attorney general's office because the attorney general has to see that you've properly filed the paperwork, you, you probably went through the process of notifying the public for a public hearing, that anybody who wanted to speak could do that. So, it is out there for everybody to know that, and that's, that's why we have these public hearings and that's why you sign that order so that we can get it recorded in the county clerk's office.
But I, I think Andy's point again is well taken, that it's the bargain for exchange that's made with the developer. It's not the town coming in and mandating or imposing something that's, that everyone in the town has to, um, be a part of. And certainly, I know, I understand the recording requirements, but I've done plenty of real estate closings and that is not brought up ever.
Well, it should be.
As far as what, what district, what your fees may be, it's, you know, are you getting good title or not for the most part?
Well, it's written in the order when you sign it, and when we, when you sign it, we talk about the fact that it's, it's there for the, and, and the attorney should bring that up at the closing, they should, they should know that you're gonna be doing that. Um, and actually, it's not so much the developer, the developer's complying with our requirements, whatever they may be. In this case, the developer's saying, if you're going to require me to create a district, I will do that, I'll petition you to do that on behalf of all the future owners of this property, we will create that district and we will abide by whatever the district requires. Now, the district may be very minimal early on unless somebody says to us, you know, we want more than that. Cause all we're really doing is we're mowing the grass, we've identified the mowing, and if something happens to their sign, if that's part of the district, which it usually is and should be at this point in time, that, that sign will get fixed, but that means next year, whatever it costs to get that thing fixed, it's gonna be reflected in their, in their assessment for that district. So, I mean, it, it just depends on what they want. Now, certainly what will happen is at some point in time, if, uh, they want more than that, they'll come as a group to us and then we'll obviously come back to you for it, but if they want just the minimum requirement, we'll do that. And we've been doing that, as, as a matter of fact, over Country Club Plaza, we created that district over there years ago and identified what they wanted and we put it in and they've been paying the minimal rates for what they're getting. Just depends on what they want.
And we're not creating a brochure just as a education, that was, I, I had presented it to you at the last time, but.
Yes.
I did, we didn't take it any further from that point on. But we'll talk about those items and what percentage.
Yeah, because, I mean, we didn't bring it to what I would call a logical, you know, conclusion at that time, so.
I think that's the, the communication that Andy was alluding to is, you know, I mean, we can, we can cite various places where it's recorded, where it's signed off on, but the practical effect of buying a home of that, you know, ultimately, who are they gonna turn to, they're gonna turn to the town. And I think it's important for those new residents or residents building homes to understand what they're getting into.
Yep.
And then future residents, I mean, so as the second owner coming in here, um, understand, you know, what that, you know, particular fee, that thirty-five or seventy-five or whatever that is, uh, what that goes to, because that, that might be different than, you know, what I'm paying. You know, because they're gonna pay, they're gonna pay a, a drainage maintenance fee, they're gonna pay their drainage fee. But in addition to that, uh, they're gonna be paying a special district fee, you know, for their particular area, so.
Well, and, and I just think it's important that it's documented somewhere in, in the beginning of, you know, the process of somebody building a house so that it's there. And, and should someday this board down the road, you know, somebody, one of those residents, five, ten, fifteen, seven years, I don't know, whatever it is, says, well, you know, the, the town should be doing X, Y, and Z, we can go back and say, well, here in your, whatever, when you, when you built this house, or when you bought the house from somebody that built the house, that's what the, the thirty-five dollars is going towards and, you know, that's what you signed up for when you decided to build a house in this particular development. So that, you know, the resident over in the other part of town isn't responsible for paying for this particular pond because they didn't build a house that's supported by this pond, you did.
That's the whole issue right there.
That's where, that's the critical part that I think.
Jeff, in our, in our Living Next to Stormwater Pond series that, you know, we continue to run for people, is, is the concept of special districts included ever in that?
It was mostly just a listing of how to prevent nuisance wildlife.
Yeah, cause I'm wondering if that's enough opportunity where not everybody's in a special district, but to include in the stormwater education, or stormwater pond education, some component that includes, um, you may be part of a special district and this is what that means and this is what the responsibility is and just might be another opportunity to, to, cause that's when you'll have people who are concerned about things that are happening to their pond or the condition of their pond, might be a way to, to remind them as to, you know, what, what, uh, their responsibilities and why, and where it came from.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's.
You're working into this year's program.
Yeah.
If that's a logical place to put it.
Just to, so the, the ongoing, the ongoing maintenance then will be borne by the homeowners.
We're benefiting from it, right.
Okay, so in reference to then the Glenbrook Pond, which was how much, over a hundred thousand dollars?
Close to three.
Three hundred thousand.
Yeah, right on.
So how would we then, in, 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 what, year four, year seven, all of a sudden, the, this would jump? I mean, how would the.
Moving forward on that project.
I'm just trying to figure out the practicality of if they're paying fifty dollars a year, then all of a sudden, the pond needs to be maintained.
If they had been paying fifty dollars a year since the year that was built, since the year they started building houses out there, they could have covered the cost of that themselves.
Okay, so.
And that is a regional pond.
What about, what about we're talking about like an eleven block?
Right, that was a regional pond facility that took care of the entire watershed.
True.
So, it's.
So how is that different than?
Well, and that's, and that's something you have to wrestle through because it's not just their water.
Yeah, but this can't be that big, and the one, the one in development off Barrett Road isn't that big.
That's right, you're gonna have a lot of little.
Okay, these ponds, like this.
For a point, you could reach it with an excavator and clean it out in a day and be on your way, it's not getting.
Right.
In the nineteen eighties, the philosophy was, we, you know, we had these little ponds all over town and we said, we're gonna change this philosophy because it's not working for us. We are gonna create regional ponds, which take in account for the entire watershed, and that's what we did. And actually, some benefits came out of that because we were able to get a lot of people out of floodplains because of that. Now what's happened is the federals and the states have said, now you've got to have on-site detention and quality treatment before it leaves the property. So now you're stuck, now you've got to have a pond for almost every subdivision that comes in. You might get lucky here or there where you, you can share with somebody else, but generally speaking, you've got to treat water before it leaves the project.
So the days, the days of regional ponds, we've seen, we've seen more regional ponds are, are probably, uh, gone. Uh, you might, as, as Jim said, uh, and, you know, Jeff, as he takes a look at different things, if you've got subdivisions that are side by side, um, and you can work it so that you have one pond that maybe supports the two, that fulfills the requirements of the stormwater management, uh, for, uh, retention and, uh, water quality, you might be able to get away, but the days of the silver, Silverwood ponds and ponds like that are, are probably, are probably long gone.
So if, if these ponds are required for each developmental district or development that comes into town, in essence, we're looking at any future development in the town of Penfield, any future homeowner is going to be forced into a special improvement district and pay an additional fee. Okay, just, I wanted to make sure that that was well, what the case was, so it's sort of like, from this day forward, there will be an additional fee borne by the homeowner for the maintenance of the pond.
And I think that that, that's reasonable and fair and equitable as long as that new homeowner understands that from day one and doesn't get that news in year five and then comes to the town board and says, you know, what are you guys doing and we have to rehash everything?
But it's like a lighting district.
And it's like a surprise to them.
It's new to them.
Stormwater's becoming a utility.
Right.
You pay for your water service, you pay for your gas service, you pay for table or anything else, now you're paying for your stormwater treatment, just as in the other.
And we do have a few ponds, Will Pond, which is a regional pond, uh, Glenbrook Pond, which is a regional pond, we're always gonna have to maintain those because it's more than just people around.
It serves more than that neighborhood.
Right.
Serves a lot of neighborhoods.
I mean, what if they don't mind if it just?
Well, you've got to do it at the beginning of a project.
Right.
You have to do it at the beginning of the project so you're not dealing with eleven individuals, you're dealing with one, with one, and that's, that's part of the whole process going in. So that, uh, in this particular case, uh, D'Angelo is the owner, uh, you know, you take care of everything because, uh, you know, he, he signs off, uh, everything is known upfront, so that then when Andy Moore or Linda Cole or Jeff Benway go to, go to buy a house there, uh, they say, okay, here, here are all the, you know, the associated fees now. uh, they say, okay, here, here are all the, you know, the associated fees now. We have some, some areas, I think, as, as somebody just mentioned about, uh, lighting district, you know, we've got the intensified lighting district, because they wanted lights in there, so they know that there is a fee for lights. Everybody benefits for the, uh, intersection lights that we, that we pay for, but if you want lights every other house in your subdivision, uh, you pay for those and you pay for the utilities. So I think Mark kinda hit the, hit the nail on the head, this is kind of the, the next utility, uh, if you will.
Interesting situation coming up before you, before too much longer, is the Ashland Rice subdivision. Remember last year, right around this time, we talked about the creation of that district to take care of that pond, or, or sign them? Well, houses were being built at that point in time, so houses were being closed upon, so he had to go out now as the developer and knock on everybody's front door and explain to them why they had to sign this petition, which he's done. Um, he still has a couple more people to sign off on, he's gonna submit that petition to you, but everybody that signed that petition actually knows more, because they live there now, than they would have if the developer just got in to create the district without them knowing, so...
So would we create these districts, as Mark said, for utilities or amenities, or both?
Both, both, the signs.
The special district.
It's, it's whatever, with whatever they wanna have in the future.
If they wanna have a subdivision sign, you could enroll that in with the land ownership, the pond maintenance. If they wanted to go...
Because remember, we said if somebody happens to the sign, nobody repairs it, we take it down and get rid of it and charge that cost to their taxes, because you can't have the sign sitting out there in the state of disrepair, and if they wanna do it themselves, that's all well and true.
If they want nothing, then they pay a base maintenance rate, if they want more, then they could elect to...
I think what's challenging with pond ownership versus lighting or a sign, especially lighting, lighting's very black and white, it's, you know...
On or off?
On or off, or broken, or, or not broken, but a pond can go through certain stages where it's, that's the education component, um, uh, for residents who choose to live near a pond or on a pond, um, and understand that, you know, that your pond may enter into different stages, and here's what the town's responsibility is and, and what it's not. So it's, it's different, I think if there's more education that can be done there than simply lights on or off.
Pond man.
Yeah, kind of the bottom.
Job security, we're gonna have to maintain those ponds.
Okay, is that, so, um, are we, are we, are we there? Where as, as these new, as these new developments come in and they, and most every one of them now, like we've seen, are gonna have, you know, at least a pond, maybe there's gonna be a sign like we saw at Ashland Rice, um, that we roll those into a special district, the, the developer, the owner and the developer, um, you know, signs off on that. Uh, but we certainly have got an education process, I think, Andy, to your point, we've got an education process so that, uh, folks, new homeowners or seconds, thirds, fourths, understand what that, what that fee is for.
Absolutely.
I'm there, I agree.
Okay. And then the, the hundred and, the hundred and, and some odd, uh, ponds that we have, hundred and seventy-five odd ponds we have today?
Double that.
Yeah.
Well, I shouldn't say that, that's not true, because...
Some are just still dry ponds, which are easy...
We've looked at, we've looked at how much development really can take place for residential development left in the town, and you're not gonna have double that. You're not gonna have that many ponds coming out. You might not even have half that.
I'm just saying, what about all those ponds that we have today?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, uh...
You know, so...
That's why I wanted to open to people creating their own, but like we said, not fifty percent, make it seventy-five, eighty percent. Because I can see people have, saying that they don't like the ponds because they smell, because they're full of algae, and they want the town to do something about it, and it's not in our, it's not in our structure now to do that level of maintenance. So if they want it, create a district.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be interesting to see, I mean...
I'll bet you nobody creates one, because only small percent live on the pond.
Because they're gonna have to pay for it. They're gonna have to pay for it, they, these people don't have a choice. Any new homeowner in Penfield that purchases a home in one of these districts does not have a choice, they will pay, because every home, every development, it has to have a pond.
Well, they, they have a choice not to buy or build.
Build it, do something to build it.
So Andy's point is well taken, it's the, it's the disclosure that's important.
I understand that, but, but unless you are buying a house in a, in a pre-existing tract, what I'm saying is that, at some point, whenever you buy a house in any of these new developments, whether it's now or in thirty years from now, there's going to be a pond. So, again, the, the current, I mean, the current homeowners, you may have four or five who look like they choose to live by a pond, because their backyard's back up to the pond, but you could have tracks with two hundred and eight homes with three ponds, and they're nowhere, nowhere near a pond.
And they'll never pull up near the pond.
Exactly, so, so this is...
The rest of the neighborhood, I'm sure, golly doesn't care.
So I just, you know, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward, but I think it's...
Or specifically didn't buy next to a pond.
Mm-hmm, right.
Purposely.
So it's, 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 again, it's, it's one of those, and maybe this is why it's taken us so long to get back to this issue, but it's sort of like, you're not really, uh, uh, you're not really choosing to live by the pond. It's just if you wanna live in a new development, you're forced into the situation.
In every case, in every case. I go back to where you are, though, what about the hundred and seventy-five that are out there now, that we have to maintain and constantly maintain?
We're stuck unless somebody, until somebody wants something above and beyond, like herbicides, and say, well, form a district.
Yeah.
At least we, now we have a solution that we can offer to them. Right now, it's just, we don't pay for that, and you gotta look at it like that for the rest of your life.
Well, the onus is back on the neighborhood, fine, go back and get seventy-five percent of your neighbors in this neighborhood to agree, come petition the town board for creation of a district.
And we're consistent with that.
It puts the onus, onus back on the residents, they can now go back and do the grunt work to get that done, and if they come back, great, if they don't, you know, that's, that's the reward.
People in Uber and Parks see a pond.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We good?
Good, thank you.
We're all set for this one?
And, uh, I'll set, uh, with this one, and, uh, so, we'll require a public hearing?
We will have one in, in September, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, all right, anything more on that?
You'll probably have one for Ashland Rice.
And we'll probably have one for Ashland Rice, so, but, but we knew, we knew that, that one was kind of, yeah, that, we, we've been straddling that one. Uh, so, okay, very good. Uh, that takes us down to information items and, uh, DHD Ventures.
Right, that's the last one in that, that whole conference.
Twenty-one fifty-two for Porton Island Mall.
Yeah, and, uh, I'm looking, we did receive the application, it's being sent out now to all the agencies and the conservation board, uh, whoever, and my intent is to set a public hearing for nine-seventeen, so, you'll probably see a resolution once.
Yeah, the, the only thing I would like to add to this particular item is that, you know, it looks like some of the new, um, tenants or the new developments in that larger, you know, plaza area are, are making somewhat of an effort to have a unique look. You know, obviously Jeremiah's did, um, it looks like Chipotle has got a couple different alternatives. Um, even to some extent, Panera Bread has a little different look, although now I think they could've done a lot more, but I think their engineer was resistant to do that. And, you know, I think that this building, anything that we can do to have them put a little different East Penfield look to it, other than just a cookie cutter building.
You will see, yeah, you will see that, I, I actually did get the, uh, the plans in the other day, and I will send them off to you fairly soon, but it's a one-story building, which it had to be adjacent to the residences.
Right.
It, it, it's got more of a theme to like what Doodle Bugs is, actually. So it's gonna have kind of some of the features that Doodle Bugs has. It's kind of like a mixture between Doodle Bugs and the North Forest, uh, uh, Office Park over there behind Penbrook.
Oh, okay.
It's got some of that feel to it.
With their small offices.
I was initially concerned that it was gonna be a medical complex, which was gonna draw a lot of hourly traffic, but it looks like he's breaking it up into the, individual tenant spaces, which would be nice, because that does not draw that kind of traffic that, um, a medical building would.
So, I, I just wanna make sure I didn't miss your earlier comment, Jim, uh, are you gonna have him come to a work session to have a discussion with the board?
They did, they already did that one time, they've been in, um...
Eric, this is Marathon, right?
Yeah, this is Eric, Eric was in there.
This is the Marathon, okay, sorry, I, I apologize, I was on another...
And now he's, he's submitted his application.
Got it, I was, I was on that, I was on the property to the south, I apologize, on the south of, uh, Jeremiah, so, okay, got it, got it, yep.
Very good.
Okay, so we'll get that in, that'll be on, uh, in, uh, September, that, uh, we'll hear that, uh, so, okay, very good. Um, okay, uh, that gets us through the agenda, any other items, uh, that bring down, or bring before the board, uh, prior to our next, uh, work session that, uh, might, uh, cease the town from operating?
Uh, Tony, just one thing, it won't cease the town from operating, but I think as we move forward with, uh, the vacant commodities situation, uh, as we receive and send official correspondence, I think would be beneficial to all residents if we had sort of copies of those, uh, letters and responses on our website, uh, so maybe that can be something for staff to do by the end of this week, or maybe early next week.
Just a separate category?
Yeah, similar to how we've had, you know, applications of public interest in the past, I know that this is, uh, probably more of a unique public interest matter, so...
Okay, so similar to what we did, uh, such as Baytown, um, and, uh, doing that, have a, have a separate area that folks could, uh, log onto and what have you? Okay, uh, we'll work with, uh, we'll work with, uh, our folks, uh, downstairs, and, um, I won't, I won't promise it'll be up and running, uh, by the end of the week, but, uh, by early next week, uh, we'll take a look at workload, get it in, and, uh, then all the materials that, uh, you know, have been submitted, uh, to date, petition, and, uh, all the other correspondence will get, uh, get up, so that e- everyone and anybody can, uh, can...
The petition I'd be concerned about, it has people's addresses on it.
Okay.
Yes, it used to be there.
So we may be, we may, we may redact some of that, but we'll take a look at that, we'll talk with, uh, we'll talk with Dick, talk with Dick Horowitz, and we'll make sure that...
Security standard.
Yeah, I agree, I, I just think moving forward will be helpful to, you know, sort of dispel some misinformation and maybe help them.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll, uh, what we'll do is we'll figure out a, a game plan and, uh, we'll get that, um, emailed out to the, uh, town board.
All right.
Okay, great. Uh, seeing no other, uh, items come before the board, uh, this meeting will adjourn at nine twenty-six, uh, thank you, Lisa.